Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Falmouth School Committee, September, no, October 14th, 2025, to order. We all stand for the pedagogy, gentlemen.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, we will first hear the Falmouth Public Schools' mission and vision, and then our operating protocols. Sue?
Falmouth Public Schools' mission: The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. The Falmouth Public School vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Sue. Kelly?
I'll do the introduction, since this is the first time, so people know what we're doing. So, as elected members of the Falmouth School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that's been placed in us to ensure that the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency, and to that end, we hereby publicly commit collectively and individually to the following operating protocols. We shall represent the needs, interests, and achievements of all students in the district, and place these above all else in the decisions that we make. We will make every effort to promote a positive image for our school district. We will keep an open mind and strive to make decisions by consensus, using the best information available at the time, considering available facts, research, best practice, public input, and the superintendent and other members' recommendations, proposals, and suggestions.
Thank you. Now, I will read the statement. The school committee meeting will be in-person for school committee members and the public. A remote option will remain available for community members unable to attend in-person. You may join if you see Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. And listed below is the link for that. Okay. Before public comment tonight, I would like to hear from our school.
Do you want to ask about the recording?
Excuse me?
Was it recording?
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. I forgot the recording statement here. Okay. They paid me a lot of money. I should do a very good job here. Okay. The meeting of the Falmouth School Committee is being recorded. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, anyone who wishes to make an audio or video recording of this meeting must first notify the chair. Please raise your hand and make your presence known if you intend to record the meeting. Okay. Nobody. Nobody does. Okay. So, Belle, would you give us the latest news from the high school?
Thank you. So, last week was the midpoint of first quarter, so the fall season's flying by. And then, a few weeks ago, we had homecoming Friday night with the football game, and then, as well as, like, the senior days and the home games. So, we had football, and then, boys and girls soccer, as well as field hockey. And those were all awesome. It was a beautiful day to support. And we also had the Taco Blanco truck there for families and friends coming to hang out. So, that was great. A lot of support. And then, recently, football had a huge win, 48-7, over Martha's Vineyard. So, that was awesome. And then, girls soccer, same thing, with a 2-1 win over Sandwich. Those are some highlights. Fields. And then, another upcoming event that I thought was important is the Grade Aids Step Up. So, it's an activities, athletics, and electives fair for eighth-grade students to come to the high school. It'll be happening next week, just to see what it has to offer, and get excited about what their plans are for the next four years. And then, in student government, Junior Workday is happening for the junior class. So, it's an all-day fundraiser with the community. So, it's yard work and outside jobs, and it's raising money for their class, but it also involves a lot of the community supporting the class, so it's great. And then, another exciting announcement, the high school's DECA Club has reached Falmouth. So, it's the largest student-run organization globally that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs, and it focuses them on careers in finance, marketing, management, and hospitality. It's very competitive, and I'm glad it's finally made it, because I knew a lot of people were working on it, but it's got to the high school, so I think that'll be a great addition. And, yeah, it's a tough application, and there's only 10 spots available, so I'm excited to see what that brings. And then, tomorrow, there'll be the annual college and career fair, so for upperclassmen.
Wow, always a lot of things going on. Thank you. Thank you, Belle.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda will be public comment. I wanted to say something before we started. I was approached about having public comment by people Zooming at this meeting. I do not have any answer. Our policy on public comment is on the agenda tonight for a first read, so I will send the inquiry about Zoom to the Policy Subcommittee for review. Okay. So, now, I'll read the public comment statement. Public comment will be limited to 20 minutes. Members of the public are welcome to speak during public comment. Comments will be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the Open Meeting Law, the committee cannot respond to or act on public comment. Additional comments and feedback can be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us, and also in our Dropbox that's outside the door where you came in. So, now, we'll begin our public comment. We time it on that clock over there, so you can glance up if you so desire and see where you are in your two-minute allotted time. Okay. Thank you for all volunteering to speak. First person on the list is Megan Zatoli. So, Megan?
Thank you. I'm Megan Zatoli, and I live at 812 Carriage Shop Road. Tonight, you're being asked to remove language from JICA, written language provided by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That DUCI language is not a filler. It is protective, a safeguard for student rights and civil liberties. It states, "The responsibility for the dress and appearance of students will rest with the individual students and their parents and guardians." That means families, not administrators, decide how a child presents themselves, as long as it is safe and non-disruptive. Before striking this protection, several steps requested by this committee still have not yet happened. One, an unbiased presentation of the uniform policy. Two, an unbiased legal presentation of settled Massachusetts case law. Three, a survey of all stakeholders, as promised. And four, a town vote about Chapter 71, Section 83. Until these are complete, removing that language is premature and unjust. If you vote tonight, or at the next meeting, I urge you to vote on each policy separately, not as a group. Last time, several members of this committee objected to grouped votes, and they were ignored. And remember, at your last meeting, you wore orange shirts for Orange Shirt Day, a day honoring a child who was forced to remove a shirt that expressed her heritage and made her feel safe, all because of a school uniform. That story is the very reason this language exists, to prevent harm through forced conformity. The ACLU, an organization that defends civil rights, opposes uniforms like this one, because deciding what success should look like is not your role. It belongs to our students and their families. Tonight, you have a choice: protect student rights, or take them away. Please stand on the right side of this decision, and the right side of civil rights.
Thank you. Okay. The next person on the list is River Zatoli.
Hello, everyone. My name is River Zatoli Ahern, and I live at 812 Carriage Shop Road. I am talking here again to express how I feel about the Lawrence School Dress Code, and about what you are taking out of the Dress Code, specifically, how you are taking away the responsibility of parents and children to decide what they will wear. I believe that this is unfair and wrong in the eyes of students. I have talked to my friends, and they agree with me. I believe that students should have the right to wear what they choose to wear, and I am sure many other students would agree with me. The reason I think it is important that students and parents have the right to choose what the student wears is because without that right, the student has no control over what they wear, and that could affect their daily life. I still think what you are doing is wrong, and I will keep fighting until the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our list is Matt Gomes.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Gomes, and I live at 57 Bidel Ave in East Falmouth. I'd like to start by saying thank you all for serving on this committee and giving your time. Tonight, though, I'm speaking not just as a parent, but as someone who spent 21 years wearing a uniform while serving in the United States Army. I understand what a uniform represents: unity, professionalism, and shared purpose. But in the Army, everyone wears it, from the lowest rank to the highest, because leadership means setting the example. No one is above the standard. That's why I'm concerned about a policy that asks students to wear uniforms while teachers and staff are free to express themselves. It unintentionally sends a message that individuality belongs only to those in authority, and that is not the kind of lesson we should be teaching our kids. If our goal is to teach discipline and professionalism, those lessons come from best of guidance, mentorship, and example. Instead of mandating uniforms, we could maintain the wording that is currently in the policy to place the responsibility where it truly belongs. With parents and guardians, it's our role to teach our children what dressing for success means in the real world, understanding context, taking pride in their appearance, showing respect for themselves and others. It seems misguided to take only a few words out of a policy instead of supporting the mask law, Section 83, which states school officials shall not abridge the right of students as to personal dress and appearance, except if such officials determine that such personal dress and appearance violate reasonable standards of health, safety, and cleanliness. Uniforms also don't erase socioeconomic differences. Branded shoes and accessories can still highlight them. What they can erase, however, is a student's sense of individuality, something that is crucial in growth and confidence. I know the intent behind this policy comes from a good place, wanting equality and order, but Falmouth has always valued creativity and forward thinking. Let's reflect that in our schools. Let's help our kids learn that success isn't about conformity, it's about character, effort, and how we treat others. Thank you for your time and for considering this perspective.
Thank you. Next on our list is Zoe Burns.
Zoe, give me two seconds.
Of course. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe Burns, and I live at 57 Bidel Ave. I'm currently a sophomore at Falmouth High School, and I have a brother entering Lawrence next fall. Formerly, I was on the warrant committee at Lawrence, where we worked towards making changes we saw necessary in our school. We were always told that writing to make major changes about our dress code of polos and khakis was a waste of time. And we were told by administrators that dress for success was meant to ensure equality and allow everyone to learn in a safe environment. The Clipper experience highlights every student every day, stating, "Our unwavering commitment to personalized learning for every student, including healthy, social, emotional, mental, and physical development." In what way are we adhering to every student every day by placing a dress code on junior high students? I was a straight A student while attending Lawrence, and I'm a straight A student at Falmouth High School while wearing clothes of my choice. I took my final exams in sweatpants this past spring, and I passed every single one of them. My outfit does not define my success. I believe that this Dress Code policy should be reviewed, and students' voices should be heard and considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our list is Amanda McGonigal. Just as an aside here, you don't need to say your street number, just your street suffices.
Hi, my name's Amanda McGonigal, Edgewood Drive. I was going to read something that I had written, but I'm hoping to just kind of speak and appeal to each of you of, like, just to acknowledge, like, outside of these four walls, where we are as a community and, like, as a country, right? And I feel like there are some people that might agree with me that everything feels like it's on fire, and we are currently, like, it's a scary time for a lot of people. And I don't want to get political, but, like, it's, I'll stick with facts. Like, people are disappearing from our streets while their kids are attending school. And, you know, there's, like, there's a gun crisis in America. There's a mental health crisis in America. And with the decrease in funding for mental health, like, that gun crisis is probably going to get worse. And the fact that this agenda is two pages long, and safety isn't on here, in light of what just happened, like, direct to our community within the past couple of weeks, is wild to me. Because, and I want to talk optics, because that's, like, what I do for a living. Your words say that safety is a top priority, but your actions say that you want to discuss and act on all of these other things. That stuff's not going away, like, all the stuff that's on fire that everybody's afraid of. Like, we need to know that, all of that aside, you've got our kids. And, like, this agenda doesn't show that you've got our kids. Like, this was just three weeks ago. How is it not still on this agenda? My questions went unanswered at the forum, and I followed by the rules, and I know I'm not the only one here. Like, this needs to be a continuing conversation, and I'm really disappointed it's not on here.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. The next person is last name of Map. I'm not sure what your first name is.
Travis.
Travis, okay. I was a teacher. I should be able to read these handwritings, but I, I'm not. If you could just say your street address, then, Travis.
My name is Travis Map. I live on Falmouth Landing Road. I want to talk about two things that are seemingly unrelated, but are very much connected. One is the lack of parent-teacher conferences after middle school, and two, schoolage access for parents. These two things are connected because when my wife inquired as to why we don't have our son's schoolage access, we were told, "Well, have a conversation with your child." I don't think that person has ever had a teenage child, because teenage children don't share a lot, especially in things that could incriminate them. This is important because, as an educator, career educator, for 21 years, it has always been my experience that when home and school are talking, there's less latitude for a student to go astray. It's very easy to rein them back in. And when I have a student who scored four on the Computer Science AP exam as a freshman with a C in a class, and his teacher doesn't even have a conversation with him, far less a conversation with his parents, then I need to see what's going on behind the curtain. There is no technological reason why Falmouth Public Schools can't grant parents access to schoolage so we could see our students' grades in real time. There is no reason for that. The other thing is parent-teacher conferences. I mention the length of my career. I've taught in Maryland, DC. I've even taught abroad. And I have never been in a district that does not have quarterly parent-teacher conferences as a temperature check, students' grades, and to communicate with students and families where students are and where they should be. So, not looking for an answer, just raising a question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Travis. Okay. The next person on the list, is it Mark?
I didn't realize I was supposed to call the comments. I'm good, thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for all taking the time to express your comments in public to us. Again, if anybody has something that they would like us to see, you can email us.
Terry, I know I didn't put my name on the list, but do we have enough time for one more?
Sure. Sure.
Hi, my name is Deanne Rockwood. I live at Jeffrey Lane, and I had no intention of making a comment until looking through this agenda this evening. And when it says navigating the future timeline for special meetings, it lists November 19th as a presentation for early childhood center in elementary school discussion. It lists December 2nd as the discussion of early childhood in elementary schools. And then, it lists December 16th as discussion and act on early childhood center in elementary schools. And I was under the impression, when I attended the last meeting of last calendar year, that this whole year was going to work towards gathering public input, staff input, family input, before we made or acted on any of these decisions. And that's literally two months away. And I haven't gotten any questions. I haven't been invited to any public forums. I haven't seen or heard from any parents or other staff members that have been asked about any of these issues. And it just makes me think, at your last meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was a question from a committee member that asked, "If we vote on one portion of these, does that mean we're voting for everything in Navigate the Future?" And I never heard an answer to that. My answer is yes. I never heard anyone from this committee say, however. And this says to me that we're not doing, or you're not doing, what I was under the impression was going to happen. So, this scares me a little bit, because it's a really short timeframe, and I haven't heard any cons of any of the proposals.
Thank you. Thank you, Deanne. That will end public comment, and now, we will hear the reading of the walking no acknowledgement.
Falmouth Public Schools acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Tsukoneset, Wacuit, Tsipowisset, Teetiket, and Tepkut, as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment with the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build on ongoing partnerships with the Wampanoag Nation.
Thank you, Glenda. Okay. Next on our agenda is an update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Terry. So, the first, I don't want, my update is about safety. We have, the police detail will remain in the 4 Elementary and Morris Pond School, as I have stated in my family letter's home, and, you know, on Friday, but I do want to repeat it tonight, so the 4 Elementary Schools in Morris Pond, until further notice. The police cars will still not be at the schools for foreseeable future due to the ongoing vehicle maintenance program. We are conducting Alice drills during October, November. We have not given notice to families prior to drills in the previous year. So, this is a new practice this fall, but we thought, because of the recent safety concerns, that it was important for us to make sure that parents had prior notice to the drill, so parents can alleviate concerns and know that these are drills. We also, our protocol in the schools with students is to repeat that these are drills multiple times, and students are trained with that. So, but we do think it's very important for us to move forward and continue to have drills in the schools. So, we, after the drills are done in, you know, the last one done in November, then we're going to reassess about our practice moving forward. You know, if we'll return to our practice in the past, we are keeping track if any parents are sharing any concerns they may have, and we'll revisit this if we'll return to our past practice, or we'll continue this year, you know, with giving notice. Also, I've shared in the past about upgrading our camera system. The team is reviewing, researching, and pretty close, I think, to decision-making on that. What we need is to wait for the funds at the November town meeting to be appropriated. I will say that it'll probably also necessary for us to request funds at the April town meeting. So, as I give you updates at each school committee meeting on safety, we'll let you know. Certainly, once it's voted at the town meeting, we can share a little bit more about that appropriated amount and what we're able to do, and then, we'll talk about what we're also going to need to ask for in April with that. Excuse me for the, sorry. Okay. So, the next thing is the competency determination. Some of you might be remembering this from a discussion last year. As a reminder, in November 2024, this was a question statewide, and the vote was to remove the high school MCAS assessment as a part of the graduation requirement. Prior to the vote, the MCAS assessment was the competency determination, and that was handled at the state level. So, although that the MCAS assessment was removed, we're still having MCAS at all the grade levels, and we'll hear more about in a little bit from last year's MCAS. The competency determination was not removed. So, last year, we came to you to vote on IKF conditions to receive a diploma, and that was kind of revising about what the graduation requirement was going to be, since that was removed, but still required a CD, which is what it's called, the competency determination. So, we did a first read early in January, and then, on January 28th, we complied with the law with your vote for the revisions to that policy, and a couple ancillary policies as well, like homeschool, et cetera, that was also related to it. So, we mentioned to you at that time that it was a, it was a very quick turnaround from the November vote to us having to have that in in January. So, we figured the guidance would come. Well, guidance did come from DUCI, and our team had spent time, and I'll talk about the team in a second, cross-referencing the guidance with our policies that we had. Then, mask also released a model policy. And so, the team, Dr. Teller led the team, and we had Dr. Harris, our system principals, department heads, the guidance department, recommended revisions to what our new local policy, based on the guidance and based on the model policy, will be. So, we are going to present it to Policy Subcommittee at the October meeting and the November meeting, and then, we will bring the first read to the school committee on November 24th, and second read and approval on December 9th, and the DUCI submission is in December. And that was a pushed-back timeline. They did have it as October. I think they recognized that there wasn't enough time for districts to actually review everything and get it together, so they did push that off, but it is due on December 31st. So, as I said, our team has been working on it. We do have the revisions now, ready to go to Policy Subcommittee, and we'll follow our regular process on that. So, I wanted to give you an update on that. Our solar leases, the town has approved the leases, and that includes the solar, new solar agreements for the town, which includes North Falmouth and Falmouth High School's solar plans that we've reviewed with you. And the select board will vote on the agreements on October 27th, so I'll have a update. Hopefully, that'll go through. I just want to say that that is the last, this is the last time we got in just under the timeline for the Biden incentives for solar. So, this will be the end of that. Today, we received an abutter's notice. The Habit for Humanity of Cape Cod is building four properties, four homes, and so, they're asking for a variance of the Title V property. The reason we received it is because abutters receive this, and the houses will be built on a piece of property that abuts the Falmouth High School. So, there will be a meeting. If you're interested in attending the meeting, you may do so if you let me know. We'll, we'll work that out. At your seats is the guidance newsletter from the high school, which always has lots of great things. I will say that the college fair is mentioned in here, the college I will say that the college fair is mentioned in here, the college fair, which is phenomenal. It's just unheard of, the amount of schools and et cetera that, that, you know, branches of service, career opportunities that actually attend this. But the date and the times here, if the school committee is interested in attending, it's, it's really fabulous, but the whole newsletter is great.
Come visit me if you go. I'm gonna be there.
You'll be a table.
Talking about health education.
Great. And then in here, I wanted to also share, you know, as the year of the Clipper, we're sharing something each time. And the show actually showcases artists and writers at Falmouth High School. So there's some fabulous artwork and writings in here from our students, high school students. So this was last year's and I just wanted to, to share this as a perfect example of excellence in education. So I wanted to share that with you. And finally, I'm going to share a little bit about a, a book that, that we've been reading and it's called We Move Together. And I have to tell you, it is, it's a children's book, but I will tell you, I believe that some of our best messages are in children's books. And so as adults, last year I, I brought one of the books that we were really concentrating on last year. And so this this year, and I have a copy for you, I'll give out in a few minutes. But in Falmouth Public Schools, I mean, we try to recognize and respect and embrace our commonalities and our differences. And, you know, so when we think about belonging and we think about high achievement, we think it goes hand in hand. So when we give space where kids feel like they're seen and valued and supported, they'll be able to thrive in their learning and also thrive in life and they'll be able to reach their potential. So in order to have this vision, we need to foster that culture of belonging, equity, and excellence. And so that, what we hope is, it's really is the fabric of Falmouth Public Schools of our district and that every, every member does belong. So one way that we share that vision is through books. And so this is our book that we've selected to really focus on. So We Move Together speaks volumes about inclusive education where every student and every staff member feel like they belong. So you're going to hear a little bit more about this from Henry during the presentation of Day of Belonging. He and Sonya will, I believe, are up very soon. But also want to let you know that Henry provides one hour workshops. And so if anyone's interested in actually being a part of a workshop, if you'll let us know, that's available as well. So I just, I'm gonna.
Do you mean listening or be part with Henry?
You're working together.
Working, working with Henry in a workshop, an hour workshop.
You did not want to listen.
But this, this is a lovely book and I really encourage you to read it. And then seriously, please get up with us if you'd like to be a part of a workshop. And that does it for my update today.
Thank you very much. I've read this book. From the mouths, or to the mouths, heads of children, you can often get a lot of wisdom.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a presentation on a day of belonging, I believe.
That would be.
That would be Henry, right?
Henry and Sonya.
Henry and Sonya.
Yes.
Tag team, I've never been across the room from you, Sonya. Usually you're next to me, so.
That's all right. I, I'm trying to get it up in presenter mode. I think I, I don't know what I've done. Sorry, which button?
I'm sorry?
Do we ever take questions on the superintendent?
I'm not self presenting.
You ask questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we do. We ask questions. But we, we need to hang, can you?
I know, I'm trying to. Thank you.
There it is.
There it is.
There it is.
So thank you for the opportunity for Henry and I to share a little bit about last Friday's full day professional development workshop. This was our fourth annual A Day of Belonging. So with A Day of Belonging, we start out with an overarching focus. And over the past few years, we've really spoken broadly about our work around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And this year, at the request of a number of our teachers and instructional leaders and through the feedback that we've gathered over the past couple of years, we focused in more on the sense of academic belonging or what it means to belong in the learning environment, how it relates to our work on MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support, and really capitalizes on our partnership with Katie Novak of Novak Education.
And what I like about this aspect is that this work is not, you know, additional or side or some people, it's all of us. What is the expectation for all staff, not just teachers, all staff involved? And so that was a very powerful time to, to just work these out, issues out.
So as we focused in on that, we were able to welcome a member of Katie Novak's staff, so Dr. Chris Bronkey, who has over 20 years of experience both as a teacher and as an administrator. He was English department head at a high school in Chicago. He came in and he kicked off our day with the opening keynote. We stayed and continued to present throughout the day. And when he set up the keynote, he had two goals attached to our focus or our theme for the day. The first was reflecting on what it means to belong in an academic setting and how that impacts decision making for educators and then understanding and applying the universal design for learning framework and principles, the concept of what it means to academically belong in classroom culture. So here, here's what he said in, in order to understand this a little bit better. He said, let's talk about an analogy. The idea is that you go to a party and you can be fed, but when you leave, right, you're not only full, but you're fulfilled. And he walked us through the analogy in terms of, you know, if he's going to host a party and all he provides are hamburger, hamburgers, how many people could eat? And so people who are vegetarian or people who just prefer not to have a hamburger, they're like, well, we can't. And he said, okay, now take that and think about what it means to be in a classroom and making sure that everyone in the classroom can participate. Everyone has a chance to eat if you follow the analogy, not only eat to be full, but actually eat to be fulfilled and enjoy what they are having.
And I think just as a, as a system, someone that's looking at academically, I want every kid to go to class and say, I got the, the most, the best thing out of it. I'm so filled. I don't like that raw burger, but I like that, mine's more well done. But I just want it the way I like it, the way it's presented. And I just, I like to see students coming out of class, coming out each year going, I've, I've totally experienced it. This is a powerful thing. And that's the message of belonging, that, that this class was meant for me, designed for me, and now I can be thriving. So that was unbelievable, the academic, we, if we sit down and talk about what is academic belonging, that would be a great discussion of like, what does it mean for each student? So this was a powerful analogy.
And so while we're talking about food, one of the other things that we changed just around the sense of belonging was finally being able to realize our hope and intention around food trucks. So during lunch, a great number of those who participated in the day remained on campus and they had an opportunity, we had four different food trucks there, each representing a different type of cuisine. And people either gathered in the cafeteria, some joined, they brought their lunch, the equity leaders meeting in the library, and some sat outside. But an opportunity too for people to continue the conversation from the morning, but also celebrating with them.
And you can see me on the, you know, I was gonna say, you can see me on the far right there. And I did go to every single truck to decide which one I wanted. And it took like, I think the, the, the choices was really difficult for me. So I did choose the small line, but I really wanted sample each one. But that was, next time we have to bring them over. If we have trucks, we have to bring.
What did you choose?
I, I went Filipino, but there was Jamaican and then there was, oh, there was too many, too many, too many options, but I went Filipino this night.
I don't know why I must have put them outside. I'm trying out Canva from presentation and not downloading it separately to Google, so sorry about that. Henry.
So you've got your book and this is not just something that we're just giving you, we are using. This is a motto, this is a, a way of thinking when people are going, what is, what's our equity team are doing? This is what we're doing. So we delved in, each equity team came into the library, we had them sitting by their class, by their school. And we engaged with this book and really there was some, there's three powerful pages. One dealing with, you know, if you're different, you have differences of opinion, how do you feel belonging? There was a couple of others that we really digged in to. And through those discussion, if I do, if we do a workshop, we have to discuss it through the discussion, they started thinking about ways that they can do belonging throughout the year. And then after that discussion, they started to work on their plan for the year. And some of the teams basically informed the whole, all of us what they're doing. So I think one team is doing a book and trying to learn that way and others are doing, just are collaborating. So it, it was a powerful time and I'm so glad that we're doing this each year, that, that the, the equity team can come together and say, this is what we're doing this year and then we can move together. So that was a powerful time and it was, it was really good. I wish we had more time, but that was, that was very good. So this is not just a kid's book that we just said this, and we went to elementary, you said this, the high school got one and said, how are we moving together in high school as well as elementary? It's a powerful statement.
So as we think about moving together and our day together in the day of belonging, there were a handful of choice sessions available, designed by department heads and made available to some of our teachers. They ranged from looking at some of resources that DUCY puts out for multilingual students in sheltered English instruction, the science of reading for adolescent readers for what it means in the secondary classroom, because we've put a lot of time and attention at the elementary classroom with our literacy program, amplifying native and indigenous voices and stories across subjects, so not just limiting it to social studies, for example, but what it could mean across all subjects. And then we had a team of our math and science department heads offer workshops on the science of retrieval and brain science and aiding with memory for learning and for study habits. And then we had some added areas of attention. So we focused in through the work introduced by Dr. Bronkey in lesson planning, not just preparation for different student groups, but more universally for our new literacy program and EL education, because we want to continue to support the implementation. Culturally responsive teaching in the brain and digging into the work of Zaretta Hammond, who our Department of Education partnered with to change our educator evaluation frameworks and to develop a lot of the different workshops that they have available around pedagogy and teaching. We did spend some time working and, and sort of exploring some curiosities with artificial intelligence. Part of the lesson planning tool introduced by Dr. Bronkey included some prompts that could create efficiency in planning for small groups or individual students. So we explored some of that. We offered an opportunity for language ambassador training, which is provided by the Department of Education for how to engage and work with interpreters and translators efficiently. And then we had a session also in the morning on outdoor learning. And so that particular group was outside navigating as the food trucks pulled in. So they got a first view, right, of everything coming in. So really, we had a lot of opportunity across the day to diversify experiences. Some were provided specific to different teams of educators based on their roles and some across people across subjects, roles and grades.
I think Sonya and I were tag teaming on the culturally responsive teaching in, in the brain. And that, that session was derailed because this was the first time we really dug in on what is AI? How is, how, how can it be used or can be used? And just, just that first, this is the first time we just kind of like, let's look into it instead of, you can't do anything about it. But we just looked at it and caused a lot of heated discussion. It was like, what are you doing? So it was really cool to get in to, you know, what, what is appropriate usage of AI in this time? And so.
Not heated in a, in a challenging way, heated in a like super curious, like wow, we could do everything that it can do.
My voice was raised. I'm just gonna say that, my voice was raised.
Can I add in? Because I was with the, the K to six group with the EL education. And it's really remarkable because they were by grade level across schools and there's just some really great planning. They were very excited about, a lot of feedback about the presentation in the morning. And then they were really digging into their lesson planning, but the cross school collaboration was, was really great. So I just want to, you know, it was, it was nice to get this sealed out.
I, I think the, the plan was, it was really good that the teachers asked for this. Sometimes we have speakers and then the speakers leave and then that's it. But this time we have a speaker that stayed there and then the teachers and staff got together and digged in. And I thought that was powerful. So not, it's not just like up here, but now what does it mean to do it? And that, I thought that was, that was very, a very good addition. I'm glad the teachers asked for it and we, we were able to, to, to serve that.
So the premise of the, the presentation about the universal design is that when you're designing your lesson plans, we really are making sure that every child is, feels that you belong, right? And that's the whole, you know, the party analogy that you gave. But when you're doing your plan, what is it that every student needs? And I have attended a lot of these over the years, but never presented so great as the keynote that we had that day, really. And that's what the teachers were saying. It just made it, like you could really understand it. Like it just brought it down and you knew that you could walk away and you could do something that to make, you know, the lessons and all accessible for everyone. And so that's, that, that's the premise, but it was, it was really good. It was powerful.
And then Henry and I decided that we didn't do enough picture taking, but we do have a few last pictures we can share with you, just to kind of show the level of conversation. These are sessions that were situated in classrooms. Like I said, we work pretty well all over campus in a number of different areas. I think we made use of nearly every room in my school on Friday.
I'm gonna add the one on the, the far left are secretaries. You know, the, the, the work of belonging is not just one, it's secretaries, when they were engaging, they were like, what, what can we do in our workspace that, that when students or parents come and they feel like they're getting what they, they need? And so I, I like the, the aspect that it is for all of us to, we're all in this, in this, especially you, but we're all in this endeavor to make sure that this is the world class educational institution that we have. So that was, I love that.
And so we dubbed the day A Day of Belonging. In the past few years, we tried to pause on just strictly digging into a particular content area for a group of educators and really tried to be more intentional around being interdisciplinary, sharing out, as Lori was talking, and Dr. was talking about the collaboration among schools and grade levels. And this is an opportunity that it's catching the attention and actually was developed internally at the school level and then ideas were presented to us for us to create the day. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any comments or questions, starting with our usual rotation? Cal?
Sounds, sounds like a great day.
Susan?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sure there was, but I'm just asking, was there a staff feedback form that was sent out? And, and have you collected results for that? Would you mind sharing that at some point? And not, you know, not at a meeting, but maybe just letting us know how it was received?
Yeah, I, I mean, we can tell you, just the initial responses were largely positive. People asking for more resources, but we can, we can take another look.
Sure.
I usually wait to the end, but mine kind of goes along with Glenda's. If we could hear from the mouth of the teacher or students, just an example, if people doing things is very powerful in my opinion, so, you know, if you could throw that in. Okay, I went out of order, but that's okay. Michael? Mr. Haylen?
I have, I have nothing except for what Glenda and Terry said. I'd like to get, not specifically, but an overall, you know, some kind of a chart of how people thought of when and what we could do differently. And as a, to you, Terry.
Yes, I would be interested in that also. I, I really was excited by what, the way you were describing the cross school collaboration and the way Lori and yourselves were describing that. It sounds amazing. And then to hear that the ideas were presented to you from below is wonderful. And I hope that there can be more of that. The idea that there can be a workshop as powerful as this sounded like, that was originated by the staff, is I think what you said, yeah? That's great. I was so excited to hear that. I wondered if you could just elaborate, Sonya, a little bit on the outdoor learning portion? What did that actually entail?
So Carmela May Sier, Learning Partnership Specialist, presented on the power of outdoor learning and how to support students. We use the high school campus, but really set it up so that it can cross over all of the different learning experiences our students are attending as part of the partnership. So just focusing in on how to make sure that those are successful and students feel like they can access them regardless of their needs.
Just to elaborate a little bit more, is that like Ben Hardin's, is there more than Ben Hardin and the books course for outdoor learning?
So all of our, I'm pointing as if you know that Carmela's office is just outside the door. Sorry. So beginning in kindergarten with Ocean's Day, each grade level has at least one experience situated in the community relative to our either science or math standards. Some go to social studies and are more civic oriented. But each grade level, like I said, has at least one. Then we go up to third grade where they start to have three or four, and it kind of expands out. And so just making sure that anyone who's attending those trips as students can help make it as impactful and support it as well as they can.
Thank you. That helped because I was imagining on campus physically going outside learning. So that helps, thank you.
Sorry, you.
I know, but I had a question.
Yes, Mike.
Maybe it's to Henry. I'll start with Henry. The AI, the AI discussion. Are you all looking at different programs for certain industry standards? Or are you just overall talking about?
I, I think with this, this situation, we're looking at, at the AI as a, as assistance. So we're not looking at one particular. And I think that will be in another group that'll talk about which one we're doing. But basically, the speaker was saying, this can be an incredible assistant. So you need to know all the information. But then you can basically say, listen, I have a student that has this need and, and needs this standard. And what are good strategies? You plop that in, they give you a prompt. And then again, you have to use, make sure this is appropriate. But for some teachers, they're like, no, 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 I can't, I will not. And that's fine. But those who will, this might be a good assistant for you to help you instead of going through a thick piece of book, a little, you know, all these things and going here. And here you have something that goes real quick. But I'll tell you, you know, where we are at, some are like, yes. And others are going, no. And so that was the, where we're at, that kind of situation. But we have a group that's meeting.
Well, and that's in the context of, of a Day of Belonging. But we're using the Department of Education's guidance document that they released, I think it was early August, to guide conversations and decision-making. So we continue to take that a little piece at a time, about a 40-page document to guide conversations.
Yeah, I mean, AI now is similar to the late 90s, early 2000s coding with Cboss and all that good stuff. So, I mean, yeah, you can use AI to make funny pictures and, you know, that stuff. But it's, it's very, takes a lot of time to actually make it work. That's why I'd asked if it was for a specific industry or just a general overview and how it can be used.
Yeah, it's certainly the overview, but the AI literacy, right? And even just like digging in and talking about prompts and the power of how the prompt creates what you may or may not have. Yeah.
It's a lot of work to get your prompts right. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on enrollment.
All right. Bring the presentation up here. All right. We're ready to go. All right. So the, this school year's enrollment by school. You can see the high schools at 686, Lawrence and Morse Pond, you know, mid, mid 400s, East Falmouth at 314. That does include the preschool. And the preschool, as of this presentation, this is all October 1 official data. Or unofficial, because it doesn't really become official until it goes through D E S I. But, but our official data that we sent to D E S I was 135 for the preschool. So Mullen Hall at 337, close behind at North at 324, and T Ticket at 226. You'll see out of district of 29. This may seem a little lower than we have seen in the past. I just want to caution that already, this was October 1. We're on October 14th, and we've already had two additional students. So we're at 31 right now, and this changes throughout the school year.
I just want to make, that's out of district special ed, right? Not just like kids out of district?
Yeah, out of district special. They're out, the out of district placements that we refer to. And let's see, so enrollment by grade. I want to point out here, as grade four, you can see is our biggest grade level for over 250. It was just a few short years ago. When we were all excited, we had over 250 come in at kindergarten. So that was a big year. So you can see the differences. Our kindergarten this year was 173. So that's 80 between our fourth grade, which was our largest group, at 259, and kindergarten this year at 173. You can see that that's an 86 student drop from fourth grade to kindergarten. Our school choice, it is kind of unheard of. I'm not sure how this happened, but FY '26 is the same as FY '25. So this school year, same as last year, at 175 each. And you can see, you know, the different years from '22, '23, '24. We had a drop there right after the COVID years. And then we are picked back up with our, our school choice.
Terry, can I ask a question as we go? Do you want to?
Whatever, Lori.
Okay. So this is like gross students in, right? This is not taking into account anyone, any students such school choice?
Correct, this is school choice in. Yep, school choice in. And all the school choice, so.
Right.
Yeah, total school, school choice. Here's our enrollment, a five-year comparison. As you can see, it's, you know, as we have presented many times, it's a, it's a steady decline using the Cape Cod Collaboratives method that we used over a year ago, looking at the, the enrollment. You know, it's about 2% each year, and it's continued to show that. Our multilingual learners, same percentage as last year at 7.9. So it's holding steady. Our students with disabilities were slightly up at 24.9 at the percentage point. Our economic disadvantaged up slightly. We were holding, for three years, we're holding right there on the upper 30s. And now we've pushed into, to the 40. FY '22 shows the 41%. And here is broke down by race, ethnicity. As you look at these numbers, they're pretty steady from last year. There's not a lot of change at all. And that's it?
Okay. Any comments or questions? I guess we'll start in this.
I would find, I don't know if we can do this, but I would find it helpful to have some time to look through that and then have comments and questions at future date, because that was a lot of data. I don't know if we can do that, but I was not able to absorb that or process it or have any commentary, really. I think the thing that stood out to me the most was slide two, the grade four being the highest, and then it drops off before and after that. And that's curious to me. I would love to dig into that more and find out why grade four is the highest enrollment.
Well, that was the kindergarten coming in. And so we've always had bubble years on that slide. The next highest was eighth grade, and that was our other kind of bubble year. So we've had those periodically.
That's what I mean. I didn't have time to really analyze it at all, so I'm not gonna have.
No, I know. But I'm just trying to explain that, that it may have been the highest, but we, we tend to do it. But then it kind of, it drops into kind of like the next level when we were showing over like the, the longer period of time.
I heard you speak of bubble years before. So I don't know if it's possible to revisit this at a future meeting after. It would help, it'd also helpful to have a printed version of it, which I think we usually do. And then I can sort of take notes and refer and look at it. Those are my comments for now. Mike?
Yeah, I agree with the printed thing. Because normally when you all are talking, I'm looking at my pieces of paper. Because I can't see that far. I was also hoping, I don't know where Ryan went, but if, if we can hit that X on that participants button, does that screen get bigger? Because I couldn't, the presentation was smaller than it normally is, if that makes sense. But I don't know. Yeah, having it on paper either before or at least during, so I can go along with it. Because there was one slide, I don't know, towards the end. Oh, I know what it was, the enrollment, right? And the enrollment bar chart is like, duh, 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 goes down. But I didn't know what the numbers were, whether, you know.
The increments?
Yeah, I couldn't read the side numbers. So I'm like, oh, that's a big dip. But I couldn't read, like, if you go back to that one just for a second, I didn't want to ask in the middle, I think it should have. But I thought it was like 3100 down to 23, but I couldn't see that far.
Okay, I gotta set it back up, so hold on.
But other than that, I, I agree with my colleague, Ms. Nevins, regarding printed copies. I think there's a couple more over. Yeah, so that one, I can't see the, like, the lowest number. I think it's 2600?
No, so here's the total of this year's, 2825.
Oh, 2825, okay. So if we go back to that one, what's the highest one there?
So it's almost 3100.
3100, 2825, so you, that's, what's that, 275? Okay. I just, I couldn't see the numbers. So because of the, the bar chart, starting off at whatever it is, 24, it, it, it looks like it's a much larger decline than if there were four bars. And my only issue was, and I'm not, I'm not discussing the numbers themselves, but just the view of it, I couldn't see what was happening. So printed would be good. I still want that participant window closed. Don't do it. Wait for, wait for Ryan.
How like lose the whole?
Glenda, any comments?
I have two, well, question and then a comment. Following up on Cal, my colleague, Ms. Welch's question about the in-migration of school choice that was 175 students. But do you have, or could you get us numbers on the out-migration of school choice?
We can. I don't know that the report is ready yet.
We can do it for last year.
We can't do it for this year yet.
I haven't, I don't have all the information for this year. We reported January 1st.
And then I usually share during that time, yeah.
So it's not the October 1st?
They're getting all their October 1st certified, and then we, and then we'll hear from it, so.
So is the school choice number of 175, is that?
We know which kids are here. No, we, we know who's here because they're part of our enrollment of October 1.
Okay, okay.
It has to be verified where the other students are.
Okay. That would just be helpful to, to know that. And then my other, just a comment. We sort of touched on it when we had our last meeting about the numbers for Lawrence School and how, you know, kids may opt to go to the tech schools and then. So I'm hoping at some point, we could maybe discuss ideas for a retention and a recruitment plan for students, not only who are in the district, but also, I know other schools are, are really getting kind of savvy about out of, out of district or school choice, school choice students. And I know there's a pipeline, Falmouth to Mashpee to Bardstebel. And, you know, so everyone does it. And so just how we can kind of capitalize on that, that system too, to get kids to come here and stay here. So in, in every grade, no matter why they're leaving. So, so that's, those are my comments.
Okay. We can, we can share. So we've increased our opportunities to meet with the students at Morse Pond and Lawrence and talk about the high school and such. So we can talk a little bit about that. We're gonna end up having a presentation soon on the new regulations around CTE, Career Technical Ed, and what we have to do there. So we're on our way to getting that presentation. There's more new regulations on that. We will encompass what we're, what our new, what our previous plans and what our additional plans are with making sure that, that students know.
And marketing, because like when, yeah, when we started on the committee, there was no marketing. But now we have like videos on TV and social media and stuff.
Yeah. We can share that, so. Good question, thank you.
Sue?
I'd also like to have the presentation in print. But also, what's striking, is striking to me is the fact that kindergarten is now down to 173 from 203 last year. And so much of the information that was provided to us by N E S D A is coming true, including the Falmouth High School in the 600 range. And that's not a healthy environment. And East Falmouth isn't a healthy environment. So if we could just update some of the information from N E S D A, adding 2025, I think it would be helpful to us.
I don't have any questions. It's not a surprise. It looks exactly as I anticipated it probably would. Thank you for recording on it. Yeah. Just one follow-up. I heard my colleague, Ms. Cohen, ask for ideas, I think, ask for ideas for how to stem the flood out for all grades. That would be interesting to me. I've heard a lot of talk about the high school and retaining at grade nine. But I know also for the superintendent, it's helpful to know how many people on the committee are interested in ideas like that. So I'm not sure, Chairwoman Madures, if you could give like an informal hand raising at one meeting recently, that would be helpful. So Dr. Dory knows who's interested in that.
So you want this particular question hand raised?
Well, Ms. Cohen had asked for a presentation, and I don't know who else is interested in it. And it might be useful for the superintendent to know how many of us are.
Can I ask a clarifying question through you to my colleague over here? I'm assuming that she is looking for a presentation on a plan for retention of students across all grades?
That's a question from Ms. Cohen, because she's looking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yes, that would be part of it. But I'm also wondering, given our, given the environment on the Cape, where all populations seem to be diminishing, and, you know, these are challenges that schools are facing Cape-wide, more of a strategic plan, I guess. As opposed to, we made a brochure for this, or, you know, that's great. That's, that's, but what are forward thinking? Is there a, is there a strategy? Are we thinking of doing, doing things, collaborating with other school systems? I, I don't know. But I think that this, these numbers are pretty dire and maybe call for some long, longer-range thinking.
Along that line, the collaborative has data on populations of every town and schools and everything. We can reach out to them. And it, it's always good to look at what's going around, on around us. I mean, you know, how are things going on the Cape? So you could throw that into future. Yes, Mike?
If I, if I could again echo what Ms. Cohen had just said. If everyone's dealing with the same population issues and we all have very similar pros and cons living on the Cape, I would think that we're looking for some kind of a new idea, a new initiatives to bring students here as opposed to Born Mashpee, Sandwich, Barnstable, et cetera. With that CTE, if we widen that out for the presentation of like, what are we doing to stand out from the rest? I think is kind of a good way to say it.
I would be interested in that presentation also, for the record.
Okay. One thing too, that people don't like you to say, but sometimes putting two schools together might not be such an outlandish idea in this day and age, like Born and Falmouth, you know, putting them together and sharing, you know, I don't know, just something to look in the long run too. you know, I don't know, just something to look in the long run too, so. So, any other questions or comments? All right, the next item on the agenda then would be, um, presentation on MCAS.
So, Dr. Tellier?
Easier to navigate, use Google Slides, Ms. Welles. All right, thank you for the opportunity to share with you, uh, information relative to the spring twenty-twenty-five administration of the MCAS assessment. Um, one of the things that I think is a standout, and we've heard it, uh, in a number of different media outlets and the Department of Education in their own press releases, is that in some grades, there was sort of a plateau of progress. We're gonna see some of that, and then also for us, there's particular bright spots in achievement and growth, and I want to be able to call those out, especially relative to, um, a variety of different, um, undertakings in which we're involved, including updating our curricular resources. So in this presentation, I'm going to start out with English Language Arts. I'm gonna talk about achievement, growth, continue on to math, and then conclude with science. So this is a summary of our progress, uh, in each assessed grade from grade three through ten. So the grades are laid out left to right at the bottom, and then the percent of students who are meeting and exceeding. It's combining those two levels of proficiency. Uh, so the darker or the maroon bar is Falmouth, and then the lighter, uh, I guess, displays over there is peach bar, is the state. And you can see at each of the grade levels, we are either coming alongside or ahead of the state, with the exception of grade seven. Um, so one of the things that we focused in on in grade seven is unraveling where, in particular in the standards, um, we need to spend more of our energy, and in particular, uh, with this, with this cohort, it's in the standards around writing. And so the team has developed a common assessment, and they are reviewing the curriculum at grade seven to respond to, uh, the particular need of that cohort, as it wasn't a demonstrated need in the cohorts that preceded them. So they are focusing their attention on that. Um, also in our EL education, there are specific curriculum that, um, the writing is included within. It's not a separate curriculum where we're doing exercises independent of what the students are reading and discussing. So all of that being integrated is also, um, a part of our responsive plan. And, um, I would also like to call out, so in grade three, you can see that for Falmouth, the percent meeting and exceeding is at forty-seven percent, and for the state, it's at forty-two percent. Um, that cohort at grade three, so each year, we tested different cohort of students, but the grade three itself, year over year, so different students each year, has continued to increase the percent that's meeting and exceeding. So students continue to have the explicit phonics instruction of foundations, which is now switched to the phonics that's embedded in the, um, EL education. And then we're using foundations, um, for student intervention and more small group, uh, instruction. So the phonics will move at a slightly faster pace in our new EL education. So we anticipate seeing as those new routines are in place, um, that to continue to rise. So that was just one of the pieces that we're seeing in the earlier grades, and then over time, seeing that play out um, across other grade levels as the students advance. Digging in a little bit and focusing on student groupings, um, and student membership in these groups. So, um, all students is on the far left, and then there's three other student groupings, low income, students with disabilities, and high needs, that's moving, um, left to right on the bottom line. Um, we group grades three through eight because at some grade levels, we don't have a high enough, uh, number of students in each of the groups to report out at each individual grade level, so year to year, it's hard to, to show that through line. So pulling the grade three through eight report allows us to consistently, year over year, report out on the performance of students. Um, we see that in grades three through eight, we are ahead of the state, and each of the student groups, with the exception of students with disabilities. And so one of the things when we were digging in and studying this, is we can see that, um, as we go back in grade, so at grade six, we had an increase in students meeting and exceeding expectations, uh, above the state and for their, their own cohort, year over year. Um, so students with disabilities, um, thirteen percent met expectations, met or exceeded this year, eight percent, uh, in the prior year, so we're seeing increasing growth there. Also true grade four, um, nine percent of the students, um, met expectations this year versus five percent in the prior year's administration. And in grade three, we're seeing students start to show up, and that was that, um, call-out group we talked about a moment ago, exceeding expectations, um, which is something we had not seen in a few years prior for students with disabilities. So we see that grade three through eight report, and we show that, and we can see, um, movement happening in the earlier grades that'll start to, um, bring that cohort forward. And then, um, also, we look at that report where we identified at grade ten. Um, at grade ten, um, we're continuing to outperform the state in writing, which is the opposite of what we're talking about with the grade seven focus area. Um, earning a great majority of the points, about seventy percent of the points in writing, um, centering grade level texts, but one of the, the thing, uh, excuse me, um, challenging texts that exceed, uh, the grade level in reading. But one of the things that we don't know, and it showed up in the media, and it came up in the DESI presentation when they release scores, is we don't know the impact of the ballot question and, um, the change in how students may see the MCAS at grade ten, hearing that it's not tied to their graduation requirement. We don't have a way to necessarily isolate that and see how it impacted scores, um, but we do anticipate it had some level of impact when students heard, hey, I'm taking the MCAS, but it doesn't matter for graduation. We just don't have a way to isolate the actual impact for the, for their scores.
Looks like Kelly, do you have a question?
I do.
Is it all right to interrupt along the way sometime?
Sure. It's, with so much data, it's hard to remember the question by the time you get to the end. So I'm just wondering, you're saying that we don't have, like, the state is not doing any analysis to try and ascertain impact of the graduation requirement shift? Um, but have we, or could we, like, could we literally just ask kids, how seriously did you used to take MCAS? And how seriously do you take it now? And see if we, I mean, it might not be, it's not gonna be as valid as, like, a large statistical study from the state, but it might tell us something.
I mean, we have heard students say.
Oh, okay, anecdotal data says that.
Oh, well, this doesn't matter for my graduation, right? I need to pass my courses, and that's what matters. Um, we haven't done a focus group, but we have heard some feedback like that. Um, and you know, of course, teachers are like, right, but it matters, right? And they're trying to explain to students why it matters and how they use the information, but I'm sure there's still a bit of a disconnect there.
Sure, okay.
Um, can I just say, think back to when you were a kid, what, how was?
Oh, I know.
You know?
Yes.
I can't remember that far back, I'm a lot older than you, but, just kidding.
I just think about it from the perspective, I have a child where it mattered, and a child who's coming up, right, just entered high school where it doesn't matter, and hearing their cross-conversation?
Right.
Right, uh, and how that plays out, and I'm telling them all the reasons why it's important. Uh, here's just another look at it, so this is looking at it from growth. So we forecasted looking at the achievement of grade seven, um, and attending to writing, so that, uh, plays out here in the growth as well. But grade ten, where we saw some of the scores, uh, a little bit lower, um, we do see moderate growth with the exception of the student with disability cohort, which we just discussed. Um, and then we can see the, um, moderate growth playing out at four, grades four, five, and six. And in some of those cases, um, their growth score, uh, or their student growth percentile went up, um, between, uh, one and three points. Some held steady and some went up, but they're all in that moderate range.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Not to be naive, but what do these numbers mean? They're just numbers, I'm assuming it's a scale from one to a hundred percent, so forty-nine means that they're forty-nine percent better?
So they take, um, every student who's taken the test at a particular grade across the state, and they say that average growth, they, they take that whole cohort, and then they set the state at fifty, and then they compare the students testing in each district relative to that state of fifty.
Also fifty is the average across the state?
So fifty is sort of that, that central focal point, yeah.
So forty-nine or fifty-one means that we are growing in line with the average of the state?
Correct, yeah.
So the number is all relative to the state average?
Yes, and this is the, and then the second part of that, um, is that with growth, they compare a group of students to themselves in their previous MCAS tests, whereas achievement is comparing different groups, same grade level.
But the, the fifty percent, whatever the average growth rate is, is an average of all the school districts in the state.
Right, yeah, at that grade level.
If we, if every student grows fifty percent, that just means that they're average with the state average, so, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just makes sense to me now, but I probably asked that last year too, I think I might have.
I don't mind, it's a good test of my.
We're solidly average, is that what that says?
We're making, uh, continued growth. So one of the things about growth that we've learned since the state started reporting the growth percentile is that when you are at high growth, whether it's one or two years, you often have that cohort sort of take a, a dip down because you don't always grow them. But if you stay in that, um, moderate growth range, you tend to make stronger steps in your progress year over year. Cause your, your, um, instruction, the material that you're, uh, exposed to and what you're learning continues to get more challenging, so you want to continue to rise each year with that.
Since you're already crossed, and the grade seven is highlighted in beige there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there something about being in, in grade two during COVID? Is there something about the writing curriculum in grade two that they really suffered more than their peers in other grades?
Not necessarily, because, I mean, similarly, right, I think about the change between grades two and three, and that eighth grade cohort, and the impact that they had on grade three, where they start to write some longer passages. So, I mean, it's hard to rationalize that it could impact one grade level different from another in that way.
So there's nothing particular about the second grade writing curriculum that they missed?
Not, I, I wouldn't scale that up as a, a primary.
Cause?
Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up to my colleague's question, are we in grade seven? Is that something that we see the last, let's say, three years, where grade seven has that dip? Because if every year was the same grade having the dip with different students, we'd be an environmental factor changing the way one gets taught, from a teen teacher to, you know, a bunch, and I, I don't know the answer, but if we could in the future, or via email, get like this chart for the last, like, four years? Cause that's the best way to see trends, and if that is, if Katrina has something with that grade seven, if that's a trend, it would, it would continue the last few years, if that's the same thing. Which would rule out the COVID second grade thing, Katrina, but at least let us know.
Mm-hmm. I would be interested in that also, I need a, a note to look at that.
I won't interrupt again.
Um, so we're gonna follow that same format, but look at math. Um, so the achievement summary and mathematics, again, where the maroon is founded, and that peach color is the state. Um, you can see that we've made, uh, consistent strides in our earlier grades to continue to increase, uh, or to perform at the same level as the state, or to increase, where you can see the increases there in six and seven, pulling ahead of the state. In eighth grade, uh, we tend to average one percentage point, um, against the state in comparing students who are meeting or exceeding expectations, and then, um, the difference here in math. And one of the things in talking with our math department head and with, uh, some of our math teachers, we, we're talking about the fact that our new I-Ready curriculum meets the standard in the Commonwealth of high-quality instructional materials, and this tenth grade cohort is the last cohort that wouldn't have had any years of instruction in I-Ready. Um, so even the current ninth graders have had at least one year of experience in rolling backwards. We also talked about the fact that at grade ten, um, in the areas in which they've concentrated their priority standards in looking specifically at the geometry curriculum, which is what the great majority of, um, our tenth grade students take that, and or Algebra II, where they've had geometry, the areas in which they've identified priority standards and adjusted instruction, we've seen increases in points, and so following that same, um, process of strengthening instruction and responding to what we're seeing in the data has allowed us to redesign some of our common assessments, to be able to follow the students and respond and make sure that they have the skills they need and the confidence they need to continue to move forward in math. And then, um, so this is that same view of looking at student groupings, following the, um, grades three through eight report, and each of the student groups achieving, um, just ahead of the state, our low-income students of the subgroups or student groupings here, um, pulling their, uh, their percentage up by a couple of points. And then again, um, looking at the performance in math, and then following it through and looking at the, the student groupings. Um, one of the other things that we continue to try to understand, and again, we're having a hard time isolating that, is the impact of the ballot question, and then the conversation around that, and this assessment being conducted about six weeks after the ELA assessment, and whether or not there was any greater impact there. But also looking, uh, at the standards and revising our common assessments to follow particular standards or areas in which students, um, need some additional support, yeah?
If you go back one slide, if you could, and actually, it's the same thing for English as well, but can we get this chart broken down into, um, five colors, one being the state average, or six colors, let's say? One being our average, you know, three through eight, and then if we could have four bars of all of the four elementary schools? Because I think that would be, and I, I think we've asked for something similar in the past, it'd be very telling. Um, I did research a couple of years ago, and it seems that, uh, when I looked a couple of years ago, one particular school was definitely carrying a, another school, and I don't know if that's changed, if that's the same, but it would help us say like, okay, so, uh, one school is above the state average, one's below, and this, this is the, the school average, but I think that'd be helpful for us to see the four. And I won't interrupt again until I do again.
I concur, I would also like that.
Glenda has a.
I, I was gonna wait till you were done, but since the questions are coming, um, high needs, what, what, what groups of students are those?
Students have membership in any one of the following three groupings, so low-income students, students with disabilities, and multilingual students. It used to be that they had membership in two of the three, but, um, when I last looked up the definition, it said, "membership in any of those three," so they get grouped together as high priority or high need students.
So I'm not understanding that because the, um, low, low-income, students with disability, and then high needs?
And multilingual students.
So multilingual students are just the high need students?
Nope, so we don't have consistently a high enough number of multilingual students to report out at any one grade or on any one test, but high needs combines together low-income students, students with disabilities, and multilingual students. And one of the things that we saw, um, this year was some increases in our multilingual student performance, and when we, uh, looked at some of the early indicators of accountability, um, they continue to increase their English language proficiency, which then shows up in some of their scores as well.
Is that, so is this consistent with how the state reports data, is that?
Yes, these are categories that the state, um, identifies and, and provides data on.
Okay, um, and then my only other question, similar to the, um, that kind of digging into the weeds question, this, this is very interesting data, but it would be very helpful to get context, individual schools, and also cohort schools, you know, what schools, because when we do averages, we're like, you know, the exam schools and Springfield, so that's all together. What, what about schools that, um, are, are typical peers? Um, that gives us some context into some of these numbers, because, um, I, I think that would tell us more.
Of course.
Just to ask, I wanted to ask, uh, Glenda, if I could, you mean, instead of using the state average, use neighboring schools that are similar to us?
Well, that could be another bar, you know, showing Falmouth, state average, you know, the difference. And, you know, and we wouldn't probably want to use, uh, big schools like, you know, whatever, or, like Plymouth or off the Cape, but what, the, the state groups you with schools of like, uh, profiles, and I think that would be very helpful to see.
Yes, they do, and we have reported different times on that, and just as a reminder, we are not in any category with any other district, um, uh, on the Cape. So I know there was differences, someone said, yeah, like other Cape schools. I just wanted to point out that when DUCY groups us with light districts, there's no light district on the Cape.
So, and that's perfectly, very valid, yes.
Sure that we're talking about the same.
Yeah, I, I think that's valid, a valid point, but then to take what the state groups us with? And, and that would be very helpful.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were all talking the same here.
So two things. One, thank you for mentioning the high-needs is now one category because it's always been two, so that was new information. So I just want to make sure that, that I'm understanding the direction that we're taking. So, did I hear you correctly that you can take the content from the MCAS exams and the grades that we didn't, that we, by our standards, we underperform? And then dig into that to figure out which content-specific areas are the areas that we? So it's not just this student needed this, it's also as a grade collectively, we need to do better at Pythagoras or whatever.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that, that I heard it right. Thanks.
You're welcome. So, grade 10, which we've, we've discussed in part, and then here's that growth comparison. So the, the shift here, matching the achievement where you see grade seven had performed higher, they move into that moderate growth category in math. Grade 10 having performed a bit lower, you can see the growth shift here. Then taking a moment to talk about science, technology, and engineering. Again, they don't test at every grade, they test at grades five, eight, and then again at the high school. We, while it's considered a high school science exam, we largely test at grade nine because that's when the majority of our students take biology. And that is the test in which we typically assess. So this is comparing Falmouth with the state. Grade five exam on the far left, grade eight in the middle on high school biology on the right. And this is looking at the aggregate or all students at each grade level. Grade five saw increases in meeting expectation by three points and also saw a reduction of not meeting by five points. Grade eight, they've been able to identify that the particular area of focus, Kelly, to your point, for them was on, for last year's grade, it was on molecules and organisms. So the grade nine teachers have already started to shift some of their lessons to put more time into those, those two areas. And then at grade 10, exceeding expectations increased by three and meeting expectations increased by four. So seeing increase in all students in that cohort. So here's a look at grade five, specific to the student groupings that we've continued to look at across. So low-income matching the state, students with disabilities matching the state in performance. Again, percent meeting or exceeding, and then high-needs performing slightly above the state.
So, since high-needs is a combination of those previous two and multilingual, would it, what can we infer that having a bump in that category is attributed to the multilingual banners?
Yes, and they saw an increase, too, in their, their language proficiency as well, demonstrated across the assessments. And while students with disabilities at grade five matches the performance of the state, it was a seven percent increase in the number of students meeting or exceeding in Falmouth and only a three percent increase in the state.
Could that be our Woods Hole connection?
I mean, that's certainly when we think about right hands-on learning and experiences for students. We don't have a, a perfect way to isolate, right, and identify that that's the impact, but we do believe that it has a role. Looking at grade eight. And again, we just talked about that they've identified molecules to organisms as an area in which they're focusing in on instruction to support grade nine students in high school biology. And then this is a look at the high school biology in the student groups.
Is that grade nine? Is that what you said?
Yes.
High school biology in grade nine?
Yeah. There are some students who may transfer in from somewhere else who may take it in grade 10, but predominantly it's grade nine for high school students. And then across our subjects, just taking a moment, we want to recognize that there are 55 schools in the Commonwealth who are identified as schools of recognition. Only one of them was in the Cape and Islands region. So we want to recognize and honor East Falmouth Elementary School. So they earned ninety percent of the points that they could earn in their accountability rating. They earned the highest number of points available in achievement in both ELA and math. And they earned the great majority of their points in their growth for both ELA and math. And so it's just a culmination of efforts, but we just wanted to make sure that we shared that information with you and that's, you know, pretty remarkable.
They gonna get a big sign or something? Did we get a banner?
Well, we can make a banner.
And so I, their name does appear on DUCY's website in the schools of recognition list. And again, there's 55 and it's the only one, Cape and Islands region. And then last time we were together, we spent some time talking about the old Colony region, and I think we're only one of only two schools. It could be three. I think there are three, one of only three in that region as well. So for, we're really representing our side of the state.
If we, if we as a committee could send a letter to the administration at East Falmouth School and recognizing the teachers and their efforts, especially last year during the atmosphere that was going on? That's phenomenal.
Yes, please. Yes, okay. Can I have a whole piece of last comment?
No.
Please. Pretty please. So, you know, the comments about looking at year over year and like being able to look at trends. Looking at the growth boxes for, for both English and math, I noticed, or I remembered, I guess, that, you know, back a decade ago, we would see those and there would be a smattering of blue boxes. And we've lost all our blue boxes. So just, I just want to make a plug for, while we're focusing on every student, that we, that we really are offering enough opportunity for kids to really soar. So we can see some of that, like really high growth again. That's, just a plug.
What's the blue box?
Oh, I'm sorry, the blue boxes are the high-growth box on the chart. They had the green, pale pink, or pale peach or whatever. We didn't have any blue boxes, which demonstrates really high growth for that.
Oh, in this presentation?
Right, right, right. And in years past, there would occasionally be, not, you know, you're not gonna see a lot of them, but every once in a while, there'd be a, a blue box of a cohort that really, like just so much growth that year. Just a plug for focusing on.
Mike?
Sonya, can you go back like three slides? This is a good one. One more. No, one more. All right, so this one right here, I don't know what grade this is. Five, okay? And then if you go to the right one.
No. Next slide.
I do need glasses. My ears work fine, though. That's out of the table. All right, so.
Just trying to be able to.
This is the science and whatnot. It, it's the only category that, we, we had one student's special needs, or disabilities, rather, which is a little bit under the average, but every other category, we're at average, if not surpassing. My question is a two-parter. Do you know, like whatever our best ranking is of the science, technology, 10th grade, like where do we rank in the state? Are we top 10, top 20? And I don't know the answer because this seems to be the category that we excel at the most. And my second part to my question, as we had talked about retention and whatnot previously, because we're, we seem, we're seemingly excelling at this category for, for various reasons. This category and like what Kelly just said about the blue boxes, this would be the lowest hanging fruit where we can excel even more and also possibly adding retention or, or new students. Because, and I'm not saying the English and math we don't continue to strive to do better in, but this particular category, we seem to be doing on, across the board, better than the average. So I didn't know how we stack up with like the top school, the top 10, whatever, and how close we are. Because this seems to be a much more attainable goal, short-term, to excel. Where, where the math and things, I understand that we're working, we're getting better, but in this particular subgroup, we seem to be doing the best. So I just didn't know how we are, you know, as opposed to the state average, just like, what, roughly?
We used to rank schools, they don't rank them that way anymore. So we'd have to try and dig into, you know, whether we use a dark region and kind of make some comparisons.
Good question. Yeah, but you know what I'm saying?
I do.
But and, and to that same point, you know, we're all, we already are committed to our partners and whatall and to all those experiential, experiential hands-on science and math learning opportunities. It would be nice to see and be able to, to articulate that those contribute to our success. And use that as a reason, like, yes, you want to be here because in an age where field trips are getting cut everywhere, we're building them up and look what we see as results.
Okay.
Very, yes.
So I'm just hoping, because there was a lot of interest in, in hearing a more of a comparative data presentation, so that could be, not to make anybody schedule a date now, but like in the next couple of months, could we, before the end of the year at least, could we have that presentation?
And just a complete follow-up to what Ms. Cohen just said. I wanted to just summarize what I had written down of what, what more information people were interested in, just so we have it all in one place for myself. Mike, Mike had asked about seventh over the years, if we could look at seventh grade and see if it's consistently having trouble. You could also ask for math, three through eight, could it be broken down school by school to see per-grade and per-school? And Ms. Cohen had asked about high-needs and multilingual groups. Oh, wait, hold on, what was that? Oh, you wanted that graph by school and by cohort to see typical peers with the other schools or?
Yeah, like comparative schools.
Yeah.
I'm curious why you decided to make that summary? Because I think we have it in our notes and Lori has been taking it down, too.
Sure, I, I recently learned that it's helpful if the committee can state out loud when they agree with something and like get.
Okay. Just curious, it was new. All right, are we done then with this topic? Okay.
That was great.
Yes. We learned a lot from what I consider to be a passe subject. You know, you live in Yonah. Thanks, Sonya. Okay. The next on here is the presentation and discussion of taking Morse Pond School offline. So Lori.
Thank you. Paul and I are gonna do this presentation and Sonya's gonna bring it up for us. And I will also say you have this one at, at your, your seats.
Oh, nice.
All right, and so the Morse Pond School, as you know, we've been talking about the need to downsize by one school in our district based on our continued decline in enrollment and certainly the fiscal responsibility. So our recommendation is to return the Morse Pond building and property to the town for repurposing. Once the Lawrence School renovations have been completed, expected timeline is 2032, 2033 school year. Paul, you want to talk about details? Oh? Can you click it? Yeah, something.
Dr. George just mentioned that these are the key challenges that we're addressing with the recommendation. The overall decline in enrollment, and we'll speak to that in a moment. The need to consolidate schools, and particularly with Lawrence School having the capacity to house three grades, reducing overall the number of transitions for students. And then this, the fiscal responsibility, not just in reducing the size of the campus, but also the, the capital needs, as you'll, we'll get into going forward as well. So these are the NASDAQ, not, this is from the NASDAQ report. This is a historic view of our enrollment. And I'm, I'm gonna breeze through these next two slides only because they're summarized in the third slide. So the, the next slide is the enrollment projections. You could see in the red box there for the 2032, 33 school year. Two hundred and eight students in the fifth grade, one ninety-six in the sixth grade. So the summary is this slide here. Historic enrollment, this again, this is using the same data we used for Lawrence's discussion, the grade configuration on the last school committee meeting. But for 2015, 2016, there were six hundred and thirteen fifth and sixth graders. For last year, our official number was four hundred and seventy-two. For this year, Dr. George just mentioned, the fifth and sixth grade totals four forty-four. So it's down about thirty from last year. And then the projected enrollment for grades five and six for the 2032, 33 school year for NASDAQ's projection was four oh four. And if you look at over this period, roughly seventeen years, that's a thirty-four percent decline, which again goes back to the populations, student populations declining about two percent per year. All right. So what are the reasons, what are the economic factors in the decision, in the recommendation to, to turn the Morse Pond back to the town? First of all, you know, from a budgetary perspective, we're spending roughly six hundred and thirty-eight thousand in custodial maintenance and utilities expenses on that, on that building, of which two hundred and seventy-nine thousand is in custodian salaries. While we're not looking at laying anybody off if we're consolidating buildings down, down the line after the Lawrence renovation, those, those custodians would be spread out to different buildings, but the net number of custodians would be reduced through retirements and attrition, normal attrition. So there, you know, in, as a whole, there'd be at least six hundred and thirty-eight thousand savings by turning the Morse Pond building back to the town. Another key area, as I mentioned at the beginning, was in capital expenses. So if you remember back in '23, we had Slim Collaborative look at three buildings. East Falmouth, Morse Pond, and North Falmouth for roofing, air, air conditioning, and solar panels. Morse Pond was the only building that actually could support solar panels on the roof. But it has one of the oldest roofs in the district outside of Lawrence. And so the roof is in need of repair. And if you did the entire roof, the entire building, that would be nine point six million dollars. And, and but then the consideration is, is whether you add air conditioning, which would be six point two million, or if you added solar panels, which would be three seven million, three point seven million. Now, why are these numbers on there? You could certainly get away with just putting on a, a new roof at nine point six million. But then, once the new roof is on, it's gonna lim- But then, once the new roof is on, it's gonna limit any air conditioning. You'd now come back and later do that decision to add air conditioning. You're gonna end up by punching holes on the roof to add the units on top of the roof. And the same with the solar panels. You're gonna end up by putting solar panels on the new roof. If you don't do all of this at one time, you're, uh, you're gonna end up by damaging the new roof you've just put on. So that's when you, that's why I just want to caution, when you think about what the capital needs of this building, it really tends to the $19 million, uh, dollars in cost because you're, you're not gonna stop at just a new roof. Does that, does that make sense to people? All right.
Can you tell me the total savings? Because I can't see it here and I just wanted to save myself the math. You had said the total savings of, um, 638 was the 279.
Well, the 638 includes the 279. So out of the 638 would be the total savings, of which 279 of that is.
I got you.
I just broke out the salaries.
I just thought you had said a different number at the end.
Yeah. And that's, I, but that's the baseline. That is the savings just from not having to maintain a physical building. Doesn't mean, uh, other savings that won't be generated. So that, again, that's the economic side of it, uh, from both capital and the budgetary. I, I, I really think it's important to consider this decision in the context of what the need is in, in Lawrence. And I have to tell you from personal experience, uh, what I've witnessed in the need to renovate Lawrence School over the last year has only made me more convinced that we need to do this sooner rather than later. And I really want to emphasize that, that there is continuity risk at the Lawrence School for deferring decisions on renovating that building. That it can't continue indefinitely to operate with the steam system that it has or with the current plumbing that it has for, for water. And then also because of the age of the electrical system. So that any one of those could break down and end up by, if the steam system, if a steam pipe goes, there goes your heat. That steam pipe is gonna go in the middle of winter and you're gonna have a shutdown at that school until that repair has happened. So there's continuity risk to not having this building renovated. The other component of it is that this building too is, it reaches into the 90s in May and June in classroom time in the, uh, in the third floor of that building. It, it really significantly needs air conditioning. It is extremely warm and in the summer, when the custodians are working on this building, it's oftentimes well over 100, 110 degrees for their trying to do all the floor stripping and waxing that goes along with it. So the building is beyond old. It needs to have new air conditioning put into this building. And when I, one practical story, and this is, it, this is a, uh, is a real example of the, the need for renovation. I'm gonna go back to the steam pipes. On the ground four of the Lawrence Building, there are, uh, there is a steam tunnel that runs throughout the ground floor, uh, the cafeteria floor of that building, right? That steam tunnel carries all the steam pipes, et cetera, throughout the building. And it's ax, it's only about three feet wide. And it's accessed by various trap doors, uh, within the building. And if there's a brief, uh, if one of the steam pipes burst or leaks, oftentimes you're gonna go for a long time without seeing that because you're gonna have to wait till that steam builds up to a pressure point where it starts to come out through one of the trap doors. But in order to get a replacement pipe down into that tunnel, you can't take a six-foot long pipe. You have to cut it up into pieces. And then you have to, literally, when you're crawling along inside this tunnel, that you, that tunnel is not just 204 feet long as its longest point, but it takes 90-degree turns. So you can't, you know, these, carrying these pipes throughout that tunnel is really difficult. You, you have to slice them up. And then to get men in there, you have to push fresh air down into those tunnels. And then you have to have them on walkie-talkies, you have to have men on either side of the. It is an enormous risk to, to continue operating this facility with steam, uh, uh, steam heat going forward. Now, it's not a safety risk, uh, except for I wouldn't want to be the guy climbing through that tunnel. But it, but it, the, the point of this is that we cannot just, we cannot keep deferring decisions. What can get us through eight years from now, well, 2032 is one thing. But to go on in time, uh, beyond that, you know, that building has continuity risk. And so it needs, you know, it needs to be, uh, renovated. And then just other features that I want to talk about, front entrance is currently inadequate for safety. We only have one elevator in that building. If something happens, uh, individuals who have limited mobility, uh, need a lot of help to get down those stairs. Uh, we have equipment that can't fit into that elevator. ADA access overall in the building needs enhancement. And the lab, current lab spaces need to be significantly upgraded. So that's, that's the state of, sorry, Lori.
If I could, um, if you go back one slide, the first line under building safety and security.
Yeah.
Says front entrance, the front entrance is currently inadequate for security. Are we gonna address that?
Sure.
Like, I'll be referring to my question, what are we doing now to address that? Because if that is, if that's one of the reasons why we need to renovate the school, that's not good. Like, that should have been addressed. And I, I know the entrance, it is inadequate for security.
Right.
What are we doing now for that?
Well, we, we, we have people stationed at the top of the, uh, when you first walk in, the safety monitor oftentimes is standing right there.
At the top of the stairs?
Off the top of the stairs.
And when someone goes down the stairs?
Well, you could see, I'm gonna say, coming, coming in through the building.
There's usually administrator or the safety monitor at that door at all times.
At the front door?
Right at the front, yeah. Either standing at the front door or right inside at the, the top of the stairs where you can see. Like, no one could come in without.
Without being seen.
So it's, you, you know, so.
And we have cameras, but.
Hold on a minute, that, that entrance, are those doors bulletproof and like double bed bolted? Because we are now advertising that our front entrance is inadequate for security of our students.
Now, if, if you would have redesigned this building today, you would put a front entrance where the front desk is visible to the doorway. So you have direct line of sight of people coming through the door.
I, I think that we have two different issues here. The one is, in the future, what do we do? And I don't even know if renovating that building makes sense. I know that my colleague, Ms. Nevens, had mentioned over a year ago, if we can get pricing for a home and school, which we have not got. My issue today is that says in black and white, our front entrance is not adequate for security and we have students in there today. So what are we doing today?
Well, as I said, Mike, this building right now does have people monitoring, physically monitoring that entrance. Where it's inadequate is it would be moved, if you, uh, you know, renovate the building, you would move the front office down to the, uh, a more of a ground level and eliminate that capability of going up or down at the, um, at the beginning of the entrance of the building.
So in 2032, the building will be secure?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
We're talking about a facility.
I understand, but right now.
The design of it, the building is secure. The building is secure by people.
Yes.
And cameras.
I didn't make this presentation.
We're talking about, we're talking about.
This says the front entrance is inadequate for security today.
He's talking about the physical building, the way it is set up.
And my question was, what are we doing in the meantime to address that?
We do. Paul's answered it and I've answered it. We have people, people are monitoring.
Are people at the, are people at that door every second, kids in that building?
They're, they're all, they're, they're an adult, yes.
And we have an SRO at that building.
Every second of every day. Because again, I didn't make this presentation. It says it's inadequate.
Yeah.
I had a question about the presentation, which I have yet to get answered. What are we doing today to secure that building 24/7?
Mike, I think. Lori and Paul said that they have people because the building, the building part is right, that they have people. That's what I understood.
We have, uh, safety monitors, we have an SRO, principal's office is located, the cameras are focused on that entrance, et cetera. Go ahead.
Beyond that, but somewhat applicable. So some of the, the things that you talked about with steam, but can we wait for eight years in this building? Or do we, I mean, I know that's what the financial timeline, but I'm just talking about the, the everyday use of this building. Is it, is it going to, it's, it's, it's hard for you to say. Is it going to last for eight years until we can do this project?
Right. Well, the, the timeline is dictated by the MSBA.
Right.
So you can't shorten that timeline at all. And the, you know, the MSBA likely reimbursement level is somewhere around 37%, 36, 37% in that range. So it's substantial. Do I think that this building can last the eight years? Yeah, but would I push it to 10 to 15? These are significant issues. The building does need to be renovated. So the, you know, a decision of keeping it where it is, in my, in my view, no.
Okay.
All right. And to one other point, and, uh, as part of the, uh, next stage, if we're into the MSBA program, except in, we'll hear in December, part of the, uh, the first stage of that $2 million in study will be an evaluation of a new building cost versus a renovation cost. That is a requirement of the MSBA program. But I will tell you that the, the, yeah, even the MSBA, uh, experts, as well as our own who did, Habibin Associates, who did the evaluation of that building, think it's a solid building and that it can be renovated and more cheaply than, uh, than, they just, you haven't gotten to that full redesign stage yet. So that's coming, but that's not until the next stage of the MSBA process. So in the comparisons, uh, of Lawrence and Morse Pond School, and this is something we've been talking about over the last year. Again, the Lawrence School's 132,000 square feet. Morse Pond School is 103,000. Lawrence School was built in 1953 with the addition in 1996. Morse Pond was built in 1962. So they're not too far in age. And, and one of the points that, uh, you, you know, again, when you think about plumbing and so on, that, uh, you know, one of the causes of plumbing leaks is just the, the mineral content of cake water. So, uh, when they're not too far difference in age, you know, it's worth noting. In the Lawrence School, you have 50 classrooms. Equivalent, uh, in Morse Pond, you have 40 classrooms. One of the key benefits is the Lawrence is that you have that large auditorium that's large enough to host a town meeting. In the Morse Pond School, you can only fit about half of the current school in that small auditoratorium. Lawrence School also has a high school-sized gym. Morse Pond has an intermediate-sized gym. Look, the, uh, the location of Lawrence is, is a very big positive for transportation, especially because it has multi, multi entry and exit points. However, the, uh, it also allows you to, to split the traffic as you're coming out. If you had a consolidated school with three grades, they're going, uh, you know, left on Lakeview as well as right on Lakeview, which helps, uh, as the posted today, they're coming from Lawrence, going down Lakeview, crossing Gifford, going down Jones Road. And the location of Jones Road is just a big challenge and a growing challenge. It's just, uh, it's a difficult, uh, location, uh, for getting the buses in and out of. It's also a big, it's a difficult location for parents picking up their children at school as well because they have to park it, either stop and shop or down at the, uh, at the hotel. Uh, the Lawrence School, it, as I mentioned, it's a neat.
I'm sorry, Paul, can you, did you just say parents have to park off-campus to go visit the campus?
No, no, if you're, if you're, uh, picking up your child at the end of the day, oftentimes you have to, you have to wait for the buses to leave before you can pull into the parking lot. So parents typically will gather in at those last moments and wait at the Holiday Inn or up at the Stop and Shop parking lot and.
It's the same thing and we guys should drop off in the morning.
So they're, they're idling and waiting, they're not like walking from there to their kids.
No, no. And then the other need, so if you, um, in, in order to, if you would try to put in three grades in, in Morse Pond, you would most likely need a significant addition to that building in order to fit a new grade in that building. And you're limited on three sides here. So you get, you know, property line limitations, you know, on three sides. The only way of doing that addition would be the moving out the front, uh, into the playground area. And then, as I mentioned, the new roof needs, uh, you know, in the section, the major section is the original roof. So finally, it's building to, uh, going back to the building, it needs task force recommendation. And here you can see it, so the building needs task force recommended upon the completion of the Lawrence School renovation, that the Morse Pond building be moved to the town, to, back to the town.
I have two, thank you. I have two questions. I'm wondering, Sue, if you can, if there's anything from building needs, um, if you want to remind us of, since you were on that.
Yeah. I think, I, I think Paul has brought up another portion of the, um, access for parents and drop-off and the traffic conditions on, on Jones Road, as well as, um, the, the overwhelming opinion of the building needs task force was that Morse Pond was the school to return to the town. There did not seem to be opposition from the, the staff. At least staff has not expressed through their representatives on the building task force. Trying to think what else.
No, that's just helpful, you know, it just helps to be reminded of some of the, um, because your report back was last year. So I just appreciate the, the reminder. And then my second question was, um, Lori, are, are you going, do you have a recommendation, either now or in the future?
Can I go back to the beginning? You did put it in the beginning. That's why, that's why I stated it.
Oh, it did say recommendation, I just read it. I'm sorry, I didn't read that that was coming in, you guys. Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Katrina.
Are we going round, or are we doing it by hands?
Um, it's changed midway through this meeting. People started going out of order and everything, which was fine, because it was following along, I think, so let's go back to our order, Sue.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Um, I appreciate the fact, having been around when, when Lawrence School was renovated in 98 or whenever it was, um, your comments regarding the building are something I really appreciate, because I had never heard some of those major issues before. And, um, having attended the Morse Pond School when it was a brand new school, and then having graduated from Lawrence High School, um, you're old. And, uh, with our decreasing enrollment, we need to do something, so thank you for your support.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I have two questions, I think, but this says here, return the Morse Pond building to, uh, the town in 2032. Yes, my first question is, why is Town Meeting voting on a quarter million dollars to look at the school, when we haven't voted on this yet? I asked this last meeting, and I keep on asking it. Doesn't seem very fiscally responsible. Um, I might have three questions. My second question is, if I could through you, Chairman Dearest, did, did the Building Needs Task Force discuss anything about new construction, or is it all just this plan?
Sue. We, we discussed in regards to, Paul had presented us with the, in regards to, we, for instance, we would not be approved by MSBA in regards to the size of our auditorium or our size of our gym, or even the foot, Paul can probably explain that a little bit better, but those things were pointed out to the task force.
But there was no, again, through the chair, there was no discussion of what a new build would entail?
Well, there are limitations that the, so if you're building a school for this grade level.
Yeah.
Um, you would not be allocated the, uh, the money to, uh, for example, have an auditorium the size of what's at Lawrence. You couldn't, they wouldn't allocate any money to an auditorium. You would have to pay for that on your own. As Sue just mentioned, the size of the gym would be, uh, in, in half, and the footprint of the building itself would be smaller.
Yeah.
Uh, because you're not, you don't have, they don't allow you excess classrooms. So, you know, if a room is unused, they expect teachers to rotate in and out of that room, so the number of classrooms would be even smaller. So there's disadvantages to.
So quickly, to the auditorium point, on this slide, it says, "Large auditorium hosts town meeting." That's not the school committee's purview is town meeting, and I understand it's great, but we have other auditoriums in this town. That should not be a bullet point for any of us to think about. That's not what we're here for. Second thing, without having numbers, I think last meeting, you said about 100 million? Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah. 100 million just to renovate that building, to bring it up to snuff, to code.
To code.
So what I heard is, yeah.
It's only to bring it to code.
Okay.
So, and that, that does not involve any movement of, of walls, et cetera, to redesign the interior of the buildings or do the labs, et cetera. So we do not have any, and what, we can't get to that point until there's enough money allocated to then go out and hire the architects to do the redesign. But part of that effort is also, under the requirements of the MSBA, a study has to be done with that allocation of funds to then look at what a new building would cost.
But the MSBA has no requirements to study the building we're giving up potentially for their funding?
No, they actually do. They have to, you do do a review with that.
You have to review the building you're giving up?
You're giving up, yeah.
Um, I read an article recently that the MSB, I think it was on The Vineyard, it took like seven, eight years to get funding, something ridiculous, 10 years, thank you, Katrina. Um, so 10 years, and as you had mentioned earlier, this building might not have 10 years left, so us relying on the MSBA does not seem viable if we don't get it right away. I, I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, let me, let's be clear.
Yeah.
The, the decision on Morse Pond is contingent on the renovation of Lawrence.
Yes, I understand that. So I don't understand.
The second, the second point here, the, the MSBA program, some schools can go 15 years.
Okay.
But a lot of schools don't. We have one of the oldest buildings in the, in, uh, in the applicant pool for renovations. They, you know, the last, in previous year, the average age of the buildings was in their 70s. This is a building in their 50s. That goes in our favor. The second thing that goes in our favor is that we haven't had an MSBA-funded project.
Okay.
So, the, it, we're being new to the well, more or less, uh, boosts our chances of, of getting funding. The third thing is, we're in a great year, this year, for an application pool. The number of applicants going after MSBA funding is relatively low.
This year.
It, this year than comparison. So you're not guaranteed, uh, you, you know, if you were to wait a year, and, and, uh, you could be at a, up against a much more competitive MSBA pool.
Yeah.
Where your chances are far lower.
I understand that. I think my question about the Morse Pond is, if we need the Morse Pond till 2032, even if we get accepted this year, why would we vote on this? And why would Town Meeting be looking at what the building's being used for if it's at least seven, eight years away? This is, I, I will say this, my, my feeling of this whole project has been cart before the horse, and I feel like we're going to get so deep into this that it's going to be like, well, we can't go back now. There's no reason for us to study the Morse Pond for town use right now, and there's no reason for us to vote on this before the MSBA application approval or denial has even come in. Physical responsibility is part of our job, and spending a quarter million dollars to study a building that we need at least until 2022 is not responsible in any way.
So I think, I think we should clarify that it's not our money. Town Meeting.
No, it is our money. I pay taxes.
Yes, but that's an issue for the town to take up. We didn't put that article in, correct?
Yes, it's only a hun, it's 150,000, not 250,000. And the reason why the town is doing it now is that there, there are going to be decision points, uh, along the way. Um, and for example, if, if you're going to the town and asking them for a substantial amount of money, know, knowing as a voter that the number of buildings, uh, are going to be reduced, uh, and there may be a value to that property that Morse Pond currently sits on, and if the town had decided, well, we don't want it for our town hall, but we may be able to sell it for affordable housing or some other example, that money could help subsidize the renovation of the Lawrence. So the study for the town is doing is for what are their long-term options in that value? So when it comes time for the voters to vote on Lawrence renovation, they can have that perspective, sorry, um, in, in, uh, and put that in their calculation. But that's why it's being done out. The second thing is, they, the town has to plan for the ultimately taking over this building if that's the decision. And that planning process, you can't wait for the last two years. Let's, let's say that we're traveling along, and we're now approaching, you know, uh, the, the Lawrence School is under construction, the, the, you know, seventh and eighth, uh, sixth and seventh grade are in Morse Pond, and now there's a sudden roof issue. All right? Well, now you're looking at a $9 million project. That's not going to be the schools if it's that close to the end. The town has to now make that, starts to make key decisions on its future of that building. So it has to be prepared before that in order to make those decisions. So it's, it, it's not too soon, we've, we've brought the town managers over to Morse Pond to start that thought process, rather than end up by being in 2032, having an empty building, and, and now the town waiting to decide on what to do with it. In the meantime, that building is left empty for two years, you don't have a building. That building starts to go, the plumbing starts to go, the roof starts to go, et cetera. That's, you have two years on the building, left empty, untended, uh, and that building is, is really damaged.
But again, we could vote on this five, six years from now. That would still give two, I don't understand the constant urgency of, of doing this when we don't have the MSBA funding approval. We don't, it seems to me that we are, and this is just my opinion, that we're working for not the children. Hosting town meeting, giving the, the town a building, none of this stuff helps the kids at all. And I believed when I ran was to help out the children of our town, and I don't understand many of these bullet points. I'm going to stop talking because I'm getting more upset, because there is no need to vote on this anytime soon. And if you need two years, we can vote in 2030. And also, I will say, to the point about what the building's being used for, if it is affordable housing, that's a whole different thing than senior housing, because that is going to affect the schools in some way. And I think as a committee, we should have some idea of what the town is thinking. I also have an issue with last year, when Chris Lumpen, who's not here, asked about it, and Nancy Taylor said, "We didn't want this building at all." And now all of a sudden, they're, they're studying this building. This whole thing makes no sense to me. This is not how we should do it. We should take it step by step. And the first step shouldn't be step nine, it should be step one, which would be a plan of what the town and the, the schools need, and kind of, you know, I don't know, I'll stop talking for now.
I think since this is.
I haven't had a turn yet, can I?
Um, I'm sorry, but I'm latching on to what Mike said, so I don't want something to come in between it. It has to do with the money that Mike is talking about. I think we should let the town meeting members, the town finance committee and everything weigh in on this. Do, you know, there's a possibility you're going to have something, so what can we do with it? What can we start planning to do with it? If they think it's the money well we're spent, that's their decision. It's really, I mean, I know you're a task payer, and I am too, but I put the trust that they have that knowledge to look at that. And if they, if you have time to make a decision, it's always better. And as we know, every day, things go up and up and up in price. So if you pay for something now, five years later, it may cost you a lot of money, like things just have gone up. So, I'm saying, on this money topic, let's let the town win, and we haven't heard their point of it either. Um, so, that's one thing that I think just would be very helpful.
And if I could just add it up, I mean, we are a part of the town, we're a department of the town, and we're doing long-term strategic planning is what, what we need to do, and we can't do it alone, we have to do that with the town. And so, um, for them to start their best use, um, study, which is what it is, what can, what can this school and property be used for, so that they can get that back, and then they can start some decision makings about what the possibilities are sooner rather than later. And, and we're, our recommendation is at the end of the Lawrence School renovation, so it's very clear. Um, but I think we also need to know that the town has a purpose for that building. And that's what they're, you know, so just, just saying, I think it's important. I will tell you, if we do not do the, um, if we do not do the renovation on Lawrence School, then our team as administrators need to go back to the drilling board and come back with a different plan, because we cannot think long-term that this is going to be a school.
Okay. So, Katrina, another topic or question?
Nope, I just haven't had a first, uh, first time giving comments, so. Um, last year, about a year ago, in October, I believe, we had that meeting with the Building Needs Task Force, and I asked, um, could we work with the town on a strategic plan and a vision for that property? And Nancy Taylor yelled at me that, um, the town would not consider what to do with that property until after the school committee had voted to release it. So, the fact that they've chosen to proceed with this, and we are now rushing to meet the deadline of releasing the property before they've had a meeting for the entire town, where they're asking for money for a study of that property, um, strikes me as strange and hypocritical, since I asked a year ago if we could work with them on a vision, and I was shot down in a public meeting. Aside from that, hearing Paul give his report, I was starting to have heart palpitations, because hearing that the building can last 10 years, eight years, excuse me, but not 10 years, and similar to what my colleague said, if the building can last eight years, possibly nine years, and districts near us have applied for up to 10 years for MSBA funding and are only just now getting it this year, what will we do if we have voted this month to release Morse Pond and we don't get our MSBA funding? And then we apply next year, and what if we don't get our MSBA funding? And then Lawrence is in a state of perpetual decline that can't be recovered, and we've given up our other property. Nobody wants to see Lawrence torn down, but if you go into a state where it's unrecoverable without that kind of funding for, um, rebuilding it, and we've given up our other property, I don't see any alternative. To me, it seems like that's a beautiful building, I've said this before, it's a beautiful historic building. To renovate it for the town's purpose would be much simpler. You don't have to comply with all of the educational formatting of classrooms, and they would not have to tear down interior walls, it is fine as is. The ADA compliance is on par with most, um, old town halls that I've seen in this state. They are all like that with bad elevators. It would be easy for the town to renovate that building for its use, and probably less costly, although I would have to defer to somebody else for that, but that auditorium keeps being brought up as an asset to the town for their town meetings. That's wonderful, but it's not our job, um, as the school committee, to accommodate town meeting. So, I was very disturbed to hear your description, um, of the state that the building is in, the steam pipes, the tunnel, the venting of steam, the breaking of pipes into sections, how difficult and transparently impossible it's going to be to maintain that building if we don't immediately get the funding that we're hoping we will get, but we are not assured of getting. So I guess my question, one question, and then I do have some other thoughts, but I would like to ask this, if we vote this month to release Morse Pond to the town, and then we do not get the MSBA funding, can we retract that vote? Or is the property forever gone? Isn't it all contingent on?
It's all contingent, and that's how the recommendation looks.
So I heard you say that earlier, that it is contingent upon the renovation of Lawrence. But if we voted to release the property.
It's key, voting contingent upon.
Contingent upon the renovation.
Renovation of Lawrence, so the, it remains on just.
What, it's in 2032?
Yeah.
Once complete. That's good to have there.
But it's date specific, though, Katrina?
Yes, by 2032, so hopefully.
No, it's expected, it says expected.
2032. Okay.
Linda?
So, wait, hold on, I'm not done, hold on, sorry. So if we're talking about, um.
Do we have a, wait, Charlie?
I have two more, I have two more points.
Okay, how long have you been talking? Is it more than 10 minutes?
No, period. I did that one time to prove a point, that's within our policy.
Just because to give other people time, okay. I just was asking.
So, two, two other things, Chris Melissa and Margaret, I'm sorry, I should have used their last names, they are not here tonight to be part of this conversation. I don't feel comfortable moving to, it's a discussion, but our next meeting on this is action. So if they are not here for this meeting, and then we're acting at our next meeting, that's just something I feel uncomfortable with.
They can watch the film of it, they could read the news.
Yes, but they don't have an opportunity to, to share their thoughts, um, until the day that we will be voting on it, which to me is not, um, fair to them, and I'm sorry that they're not here. Um, my other thing, to the point that we should be letting the town create a strategic plan and a vision, um, I have been all for giving up Morse Pond. Honestly, I have, since I ran for this and the newspaper asked us three candidates if they, if they came to it to release Morse Pond for the town's purposes, and I was like, "That's a great idea, it sounds fantastic. What a great use for the town, we could do some cool things." Strategic planning, if the town is going to be strategically planning to use that property, can we not stipulate or request or kindly infer that we would like to be part of that strategic planning? Because if they put in affordable housing, could part of the property be a universal pre-K center? Can we think out of the box? Can we work with the town? Can we be part of that strategic planning? I was told no, absolutely not. However, they're now moving ahead with the funding of a best use proposal before we voted to release it, which to me says.
which to me says maybe there is a possibility to actively participate in a collaboration that's for the best possible outcome. We have the same problems, declining enrollment, short of housing. We need a pre-K center, they, they need their municipal center. Can't we work together so that we achieve our-
I don't understand why we wouldn't be working. We work very collaboratively on everything else. I don't know why we wouldn't be doing it.
So can we stipulate, yes, the Morse Pond property is going to you and you would like to have a new pre-K center built on that property in addition to whatever you're doing?
I, I don't think the conversation's about anything until the best use comes back. Until they have people go in and evaluate the building.
Terry would like to stop. I'm sorry.
No, just, it might be good just to get another view in between. Okay.
Just, just very quickly. We are, we are not voting tonight, but at some point we will be asked to vote, which will then give the town, um, support to do the best needs analysis for $150,000. That's why we're voting on that, this?
Mm-hmm, partly, yeah.
Okay, so that's, we're not voting to give up the building. We're, it's contingent upon the, the financing for Lawrence. It's really setting into motion the best needs study. That's really why we're, we're voting on it.
Well, no, this is also our, no, our timeline, I'm gonna interject here, that we talked about after the Building Needs Task Force made the recommendations, then the school committee would start taking up all of the proposals. They finished in June. And so we waited till the new school year to start with the school committee going through this process.
Right, but, but the reason for us to be voting on it is to, to be giving the green light to the town that, you know, this is, this is something that we're, that we are in theory supporting when we get the financing so that they can then do the, their analysis, right?
I think they can vote on that money and do that best use study whether you vote or not. Will it strengthen for town meeting members that the, the school committee is interested in giving the, the building back to the town before that? Sure, just the same as if you vote for the Lawrence, um, great configuration, strengthens our, uh, position with MSBA. It's not required, but it strengthens.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not tipping my hand either way. I'm just wondering what, so if, say we vote against it, um, what does that do to the process of the town doing the needs analysis?
Well, I, I'm not sure. Well, if you vote against it, they probably won't do it.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
But, but the other component of this is the credibility going to Falmouth taxpayers next year. So if we're invited into December, we could in theory be going into April in, out of, for the first allocation of roughly $2 million to do this, start the, the, the design process, um, that the MSBA requires. Now, when you, when we start to in, into that process, you know, a voter can legitimately ask, well, what is the campus size of the public school system gonna be in, in light of all the decline in enrollment? And if, and if we're being asked to potentially fund a renovation of a major building like Lawrence and, and not have a reduction in campuses or, or, in number of schools, then, you know, then you're, you're, you know that you now have additional capital expense that's gonna be coming down the road for renovating, um, Morse Pond. So there, I mean, the dollar signs keep growing unless we back down the number of schools in the district. And I think the strategy has to be where sort of, we, we can afford the renovation of Lawrence if we're giving back one of the schools as a trade-off for that in that same timeframe to emphasize not beforehand, in that same time, timeframe. But that's the, essentially the trade, that's being made.
Thank you.
Okay, you have more, Katrina?
Uh, I do have, sorry, you know I do. Um, so when, when we say that it's important to know that the town has a purpose for that building because we don't want it to sit empty for too, more than two years. What, all I've heard of the purposes that the town might have for that property don't involve that building. The building will be torn down as far as I can understand. Because if that building, you're not gonna put affordable housing into a school.
This is a best use study of what we can do with the building and the property. It could be mixed use, it could be-
There's a world where the building stays?
Yes, absolutely.
That's what they've just done in Sandwich. Okay, I've seen so many towns around who leave the building empty for more than two years. Given they do that, right, which we don't want and is repaired now.
Which is what we don't want and the town doesn't want.
But that building takes up most of the property and all the proposals I've heard around town-
No, actually, actually it doesn't, Katrina. It's a 20-acre property. The town does not take, or that building does not take up the entire built-up property.
What I have heard is municipal use like the Mashpee Fire Emergency Services Center or affordable housing or senior housing, none of which can slot into the existing building. So that's where that assumption came from, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
No, that is not any of the components.
So point of order, I, I can interrupt for a point of order. Um, we've had, each had more, multiple opportunities to talk. So I'm motioning to move this, this agenda item. We've, we've had our presentation and we've had our discussion. We have a long agenda.
Is this an available motion?
No, um, it ha, it's not and it has to pass by two, two-thirds of the committee. So we need to take a vote on that to move this agenda item.
No.
I just wanted to know how many people there are.
So we're, so-
This is a, we're motion-
Are you calling the vote?
Yeah, I-
See, I, this is important for more discussion, I think I-
So, but I'm, this is not debatable, this is, this is not debatable. So it's, it's, um, we, what's, it's, we have to vote on it now.
I would like to discuss more because this is a very important thing and shut it.
Okay, so-
No, I said no. I said no, I don't wanna stop the session.
Okay.
I was the first one to vote.
Katrina?
I don't have too much more to say, but I wish our other three members were here. So if I could amend your motion that we continue the conversation-
It's not, it's not debatable, it's just a straight-up vote.
Then I have to vote no, because I, I would like it to continue.
Yeah, I think we're moving on.
May, yes.
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 Great. Okay, evaluation.
So, no, I already figured it out, that's two-thirds of the vote, so. I hope everybody considers that we have an awful lot of business left too, that we need to get done. Um, and we do have another opportunity for discussion. This is not the one and only time we will have this discussion, okay? Mike, I hope you heard that because I know he really wants to keep going. Okay, so, next, um, item on the agenda is to act on the superintendent's evaluation. Oh, did I say that wrong?
No, you just forgot the timeline.
Yeah, timeline.
I'll make a motion that we prove it. Second.
Is there any discussion on the timeline?
Just thank you for adding the one, um, thing that I brought up last time about having, um, I think it's the second one down, that people can meet with Lori and offer their feedback um, before we get too far along in the process. Because I thought that was a great addition this year. Thank you for adding it.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor accepting the timeline? Aye. Any abstaining?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was not following along. There was, uh, can I just ask one question? Or is it too late? Sorry, there's an asterisk and I just meant to ask about it. Uh, school committee members receive summit of evaluation at full school committee meeting May 5th. What is the asterisk?
Oh, I, I actually know the answer to that because I added it last year. Um, it was added last year to note that we had to schedule a special meeting because we didn't have that meeting in our regular, um, meeting schedule. So I put that little note to make sure we knew that it was a new meeting. Yes, we can probably take that off.
Sorry, you can proceed. Did we vote?
Okay, so we were voting, um, I'm not sure, let's start it all over, okay. How many people, um, vote to accept the timeline?
Aye.
Aye, any abstaining? Any voting no? Okay, passes. The next thing on the list is to act on the superintendent's goals.
I'll make a motion that we accept the goals as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, is, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Yes?
Nobody else has discussion about it?
No, because we've already, I mean, we've been doing, talking about it since August.
I know a point of order, we speak through the chair from now on? Because that seems to get kind of lost here. And a side talk as well, thank you.
Um, so, how does that work?
People have to speak through the chair to be recognized, not just speak out of turn.
No one's really been speaking. During the presentations that went along, people spoke out of turn, just, they were following along with the presenter. Pretty much, we still just go-
I disagree. I feel that when myself or Ms. Nevin speaks, other people are making comments the entire meeting. So, and I pointed them out previously in the meeting. I just want that in the record, that we're supposed to not do that.
Um, okay, I agree with you. We, we, we're, we're working on that. We've, okay, so I apologize if I, um, let that happen. So where are we now?
Uh, discussion.
Discussion, so, um, I guess we'll start over there and go around, right?
Um, I did have a meeting with the, with Dr. Dour, um, which was very productive and helpful. Um, and having gone through my notes again following that meeting, I wanted to just, um, point to a few things that I feel are missing in the action steps. And at this stage, I don't believe there's anything to be done, but I just wanted to say, um, during a public meeting, the, um, goal one standard to see the, in order to achieve an exemplary grade, the superintendent would need to empower not only her administrators, but also the teams. Um, and that comes up in goal one standard four D, collaborate also with the teams. Um, so I, I wish there was something in there about the teams since that is, um, I believe, part of the goal. Perhaps I've misunderstood the, um, goal and action steps. But the administrators are specifically named and the teams are not. So I wanted to just draw that out. Goal two, standard four D, um, again is with the teams. There's administrators mentioned, but not, uh, the teams and the schools. Um, and I was wondering how we, the school committee, would, would learn about whether the efforts, um, and the meetings that you're having to have collaborative meetings would be having the desired effect of staff collaboration, um, all of the efforts that are in goal two. Um, it's not clear to me from the action steps what, how we will learn whether the surveys, the walkthroughs, the one-to-ones are having the desired effect. Um, goal three, no comments. Goal four, similarly, it says, um, and I believe this is relevant to the actions and the goals. To achieve exemplary on goal four, standard three A, you must actively engage stakeholders from all segments of the community. Um, and furthermore, it says, uh, collaborative practices are also mentioned. And the, the action steps for that goal don't mention any collaboration. Um, so that, uh, concerned me a little bit, um, given that it's in the rubric and I would like to be able to give a proficient or exemplary. Um, goal four, standard three D, family concerns. To get an exemplary grade here, you specifically must promote, this is a quote, promote collaborative problem-solving processes informed by relevant input from all families, faculty and staff that result in equitable solutions that are in the best interest of students. Um, you must have regular and informative outreach to staff, families and community members and the school committee and regularly seek and consider feedback in decision-making. Um, there's a lot of mention of development of processes and it's not clear to me which stakeholders and how will be involved in the development of those processes. It's clear that it will be the administrative team. Um, so again, I wish in the action steps that there was some mention of who exactly and how will be collaborated with since that is in the rubric for goals four, standard four and three C D, which have been selected. And that is it. And I realize that at this late point and following a late and delayed meeting, which is on me, um, there's probably nothing that can be done to amend those, but I wanted to just have that out there.
Okay, so are there any other comments?
Um, I just wanna say that our job as the school committee is to work with the superintendent on the what. It is her responsibility to do the how. The subcommittee met with Dr. Dour. We relayed the feedback that we heard last year, um, as well as talked to her about it, um, requesting that her priorities be in communication, integrated staff feedback, student achievement and navigating the future. And she came back with these goals. And the subcommittee felt that they were, um, comprehensive goals. And it's not the time now to be deliberating performance. If you feel that, uh, the superintendent did not meet the objectives of the goals, that's the time, um, to do it during the evaluative process. Right now, these goals, um, we gave her the what and she gave us the how. And, and I'm very comfortable with, um, with the result.
Okay, any other comments?
I meant to, uh, start my comment by saying that I thought I wanted to thank the evaluation subcommittee for the work they did. And overall, I think the goals are very good. It was about the action steps. Okay, points taken, thank you.
Okay. Next year, maybe we'll emphasize the leading up, um, dates in the timeline. Okay, more? Okay, that always is helpful. Okay, so are there any other comments? Um, then the vote, motions on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any abstaining? Any voting no? Okay, great. Now, the next item on the agenda is training on evaluation process.
This is super abbreviated because we have all gone through this. Um, there are no new members of our, um, committee. So everybody's pretty, pretty, um, familiar with, with the process. Um, right now, we're in the analysis, goal setting and plan development. And the dates, um, all year, Dr. Dour is going to collect her evidence. We're going to meet, um, I think January, the 19th to the 30th, the mid-year mark to discuss the progress. And the deadline, um, for the year-end evaluations is going to be April 24th. Um, and those dates are reflective. I'm, I'm kind of whizzing through this, so tell me if you want me to stop, but we have a long agenda here. Um, we already know that the, um, it's an assessment of her goals. And, um, the only thing that I wanted to point out is that based on the comments that we had last year, the subcommittee, um, decided with Dr. Dour's, um, approval and support that we were going to revert to the, um, the DESI, the comprehensive, um, document as opposed to cutting the focus indicators and just having those, um, appear on the evaluation. So, um-
Yeah, I can't see the other.
Uh, I don't know, how to make it bigger?
Okay, don't worry about it.
The, the slideshow, what, not with the-
Top right.
Top right? Slideshow. Taking a presentation.
Present review?
Yep.
No, slideshow.
Oh gosh, did I just mess this up?
Oh, that's not much of a thing.
Oh, can you see it? No, I can't see it, but that's okay. I don't even know how to-
Then look up there.
Okay, but I don't even know how to, um-
Click the down arrow.
Okay, click the down arrow. Okay, so, um-
No, this is all right.
No, I have it, but I can't move it.
Um, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you can move it. We can't, I'm just looking. Evos, yep.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so, anyway. Um, so the cover page is gonna go back to the front, um, as the DESI instrument recommends. Um, Dr. Dour, it, once she starts collecting evidence, is going to put these as her live links. They're not live right now. Um, we have highlighted her focus indicator, um- And as you did, Colleen Welch, last year, you put links to the rubrics. That was very helpful, and that is on the document this year. Just a note, however, in the scoring, and I know I'm stating the obvious, that the scoring will only consider how you score, Dr. Doer, on these focus indicators. So, if you, for I-E, data-informed decision-making, that's her focus indicator. If you give an exemplary for that, but then you give all the ones that are not in yellow a U, well, it doesn't matter. It's only the focus indicator that she is going to be scored on. These are there to give you context for what the standard is. That was what people had requested, but the scoring is only going to be on the focus indicators. And if you click on that link, just like last year, a rubric is going to come up that will help you do the scoring. And similarly, the other, I didn't do a screenshot for everything, but that's how it's going. So, yes.
I just wanted to, this is so smart, to do it this way, so, thank you. I don't know how we've never thought of that before. I mean, I've been on evaluation for like nine years, things have come up. But I just, I really appreciate being able to see what the other categories are, but being able to have the evaluation focus on things that were agreed upon. It's just, because this was the main topic that came up last year. People were frustrated that they couldn't evaluate on the other things. So, this gives an opportunity to weigh in, to give feedback to the superintendent. It just doesn't get... Am I right in that's the intent? So, then, yeah. I just think that solves the problem that we have. It's an ingenious way to solve it.
So, this says draft now, but after we voted, that we've just voted your goals in, so it will be the document after tonight.
And we'll get a refresher in this, closer to it. And along the way, there's, midway through the cycle, there's time to make meetings with Lori, to talk along the way, rather than wait till the end, which we've, as a committee, I'm proud to say we have gotten very good at. I think we have almost 100% success rate last year at talking midway through the... Right, didn't you meet with everybody? Say yes.
I don't remember.
Say yes, Lori. No, we did. I remember thinking that at the time.
I'm not sure of the data.
I think we did. Okay. So, we don't need to vote on that, it's just information. Okay. All right. So, this, the next item is to act on the additional school committee date of May 5th. I think Kelly partially explained that. Is that...
Yes.
Yeah, assuming that is the same thing, so we can get the evaluation.
Okay. So, we have to vote on that.
I'll make a motion that we add the date of May 6th.
It's a typo here.
Oh.
On the agenda. It's correct in the timeline.
Oh, sorry.
It's May 6th.
Could we add the date of May 5th for the purposes of getting the evaluation?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
There's one question, if I could throw you to Kelly here. That's just the handing out?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have it.
We had to do that last year, remember? To make it totally open-meeting law.
Compliant.
Compliant.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why. All right. So, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstaining or voting no? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is to act on navigating the future together special meeting dates. And I just wanted to point out, this is just simply to vote on these dates. Then, we're aware that they're coming down the pike. As to what is part of the presentations, that's not what we'll be discussing tonight. There'll be opportunities to do that, so this is just simply voting to approve these dates. There's three dates, which I don't remember what they are, but there's three dates in the future.
November 19th, December 2nd, December 16th.
Okay, will you keep those, Kelly, louder?
Sure, sorry. November 19th at 6:30, December 2nd at 6:30, and December 16th at 6:30.
Okay.
Are they in our package, or?
Yes.
Yes, it's a short little one.
It's that little handful.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so that was my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, comments?
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Where did the dates, who originated the dates? Where did they come from?
The superintendent.
Who came up with the dates? Okay.
The superintendent. Mike?
The dates I have less of an issue with, and I know you said that the content could be changed. However, I'm going to vote against this because the content is all early childhood, and I'm not going to approve something based on these words. There are far larger fish we have to deal with than this. So, I would vote no, and I would hope that other people would wait until we get a more detailed discussion or description of what we're going to talk about, and also for our three other colleagues to be here, because last meeting, all three of them had had talks on more studies and focus groups in the future. This, again, seems rushed, and the wording on this timeline is not what we should be focused on in writing.
Okay. Linda?
I'm just voting on dates. That's what the motion is. We're just voting on dates.
Sue?
Same thing, dates. Yeah, I mean, I don't love the idea of setting a timeline to then follow. You know, I appreciated the way that you guys did it before, where we just sort of like hold some dates in case we get there. But I think I'm fine with it because we can always change them, right? If this doesn't meet our timeline, if we are not ready, or whatever, we'll just revisit and we'll change the date.
Absolutely. This is just holding times, which is...
For us.
For us, right, which is, and people were wondering, everybody's spoken, right? Okay, so people were wondering about why we didn't publish things before, but these are just, they were kind of space holders because things come along that you can't foresee, like how long is this town meeting going to last and things like that. So, we can change them. And there is absolutely plenty of opportunities if you don't feel you have enough information, if the public hasn't been able to give adequate input, that we can move them ahead, move them behind, reschedule them and things. This is to set those dates there and know that they're coming down the pike.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
I have two clarifying questions. Can we change the dates as the school committee if they were set by the superintendent? They are her dates, not our dates.
It's her and my decision when we will have meetings, okay?
Okay, so I guess the follow-up is what is the mechanism that we would use if we want to change those dates in the future? If anyone knows that.
We would vote in public together to do it.
So, somebody would make a motion, such as myself or Kelly, to make the...
Right, right.
And that would be fine, to make that motion at that time.
You know I'm going to look that up and find out exactly the way to do it.
All right, my other clarifying question is, in other places, we have referred to this as the Early Child Care Center. Here, it's the Early Childhood Center. I'm not sure why it's written differently, but it doesn't seem like consistent language.
I lost that little piece of paper. I lost that little...
It's right after the...
Timeline, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, here it is. I just...
I'm sorry. Could you repeat what you...
Elsewhere, in the last year, it's been referred to as the Early Child Care Center. And so, here, it's the Early Childhood Center.
I don't know if it matters, I am looking at it.
It's just different. If it's possible, I would like to make a motion to postpone this to our next meeting, so that all of our members can be here.
Table?
No, I can't table, but postpone it. And I don't want to postpone it indefinitely, because I want to have the conversation, but...
I'll second that.
Postpone it to our next regularly scheduled meeting. To vote on it.
So, are you making an amendment? Is this an amendment, or?
We made the motion to...
We have a motion, okay. Somebody who knows the laws here, we're working on it, not doing it, you know, doing it right as we learn together. We have a motion on the table.
You're moving to amend the original motion?
Yes, okay, so I would like to make...
So, you need a second for that. I have my did. So, now we have to vote.
Okay, what's your...
I would like to move to amend the motion that is under discussion, to postpone this vote until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Sorry.
Okay.
So, now we have to vote?
Just so, thank you.
No, now we have?
You want me to vote?
Yep.
We can discuss, could we discuss this also?
I'm, can you discuss an amendment?
You can, yes.
Okay.
I would say for fairness for the three who weren't here, who all made motion, made mention, rather, of additional community forums and timelines, I think it would be disrespectful to them to vote on this tonight and try to second my following motion.
Okay. All right, so...
All right, any discussion?
Anything to say, Sue?
No.
Okay, my opinion is, we want to start off on a good foot, and I think having everybody on board is a good idea, so I agree. Okay, so, is that, now we have to vote, right? Okay, all those, oh...
In favor of the amended motion?
All those in favor of the amended motions, let's raise hands, because, you know, there's not that many voices. All those in favor of the amended motion? Okay. Now, what did Margaret, what did Margaret say to us? When there's a tie?
If there's a tie, somebody can change their vote, but they have to do it immediately. You can't move on to any other, otherwise, motion.
Yes, okay.
And then we take up the regular motion. That is why she warned us, because, well, actually, she didn't know there would be six of us. She thought there would be eight of us, too.
If I could, Chairman Dearest, if this ends in a tie, and then we were to take the original motion, and that ends in a tie, then the original motion will also fail, so there will be no vote. So, I'm okay with a tie here if we continue to the tie in the next round. Thank you.
Okay, so we have to take up the original motion.
Okay.
And we already discussed it.
Which was?
To approve these three dates. Without our three missing numbers. Right.
Okay, so...
Okay, for the sake of expediency tonight, I will change my vote, because I will change my vote. It's not going to, we can still keep these same dates, even if we vote at our next school committee meeting. So, I will change my vote, so that we can move things along here.
So, it's going to be to the next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting.
Okey-dokey. Now comes policy land, and you were just starting to hope the meeting was going to roll along while we're in policy land.
We're in policy.
Wake up, everybody, and why doesn't everybody just stand up for that?
That sounds...
I really, I really just... We've been sitting here quite a long time.
Thank you.
Three hours, sitting here. Okay, so I guess Lori will talk about these policies. Thanks for letting us do the stretch.
Okay. All right, so our first policy is BEDH. We simply, the policy subcommittee was simply inserting what the decision has been made about how we're doing public comments. So, that is spelled out in, this is the first? Yep, we can do questions.
Do you mind if we do questions as we go?
Sure, it makes it easier than going back and forth.
Yeah, there's so many. So, I just want to make sure that this is still going to get kicked back to policy, to try and figure out what to do about our rumors.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They'll all get kicked back, either no comments or comments.
Right, right, I just meant for that particular topic, yeah.
Yeah, BEDH number three. There was some discussion about a majority vote for time extension, but we're not putting that in there, correct? That's not one of our, if that makes sense, because it says here, the presiding chair may permit extension. We deleted that. But is there an avenue for...
I think pretty much any time you can, in any situation.
Yeah.
Not just here.
Yep.
Yeah, just to make it smoother flowing, I think we eliminated that.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, again, this is first read, so you can send in any questions you have afterwards on any of these, and we'll take it back up to the policy subcommittee. BDE-R, this was just cleaning up the policy, so it reflected the actual committees and assignments. Name changes, you'll see some name changes. We went to official name changes and then left on what our policies are now, so that comes... The next few policies are updating the guidance. There was, the mass guidance was updated regarding the raffles as fundraisers, so that it's more aligned with the state law. And so, we were aligning GBEBC to include that language. Also, JJE to include the correct language, KVE to include the correct language. And so, that's about the fundraising, raffles, specifically about raffles. JICA, the subcommittee discussed and decided that because we have in the student handbooks each of the dress codes, and you vote the handbook policies, and you, within the handbooks, that the language here would be deleted, the statement would say, student dress codes are published within each school's student handbook, of which you still vote. Policy JQ, this was inaccurately reported, that we could withhold report cards if students still owed fines. That is incorrect according to the law. So, we're not sure when that was added, but we, I'll give Mary credit here, she found that one. But what we were missing is that it is okay, and we're not saying that we're going to do any of these things, but it is permissible to hold someone from graduation exercises and activities, as well as extra class activities if these fines aren't paid. And that's it. Mike?
If I could, to Dr. Doer, the last one you said, exercises and activities. Is that like field trips, or is that actual graduation?
Actual graduation.
Okay, now, does that mean that they do not get to participate in graduation, but get their diploma? Or does that mean no diploma?
That they still go to graduation. It's the practice for graduation and any activities leading up to graduation.
But they can still graduate. Thank you, okay.
I don't ever know, ever have done, we actually have never done any of it. Really, it was cleaning up to match the law.
Yeah.
I understand, like, missing the Red Sox game versus not graduating. Thank you.
There's a lot in the policies, and, you know, we say, send an email if you think of something along the way. We usually pick the person who isn't here to direct the emails to, right? But since I opened my mouth, you can send them to me if you want, okay? All right. Then we will act on surplus science material.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lori, do you have anything to add, or?
No, I think Sonya said it, everything in the memo.
I was just writing down what Dr. Doer had just said. Are we, we're not discussing the policies tonight, okay? It's been a while since we've had a big batch of policies.
I know, I know. And we don't like to admit it, but we do go second reads on policies because they're so complicated, so... But if you have any questions along the way, okay, you can ask me. Okay, back to the science. We have a vote in a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next, we have some grants that Dr. Doer explained to... Okay, next we have some grants that Dr. Door will explain to us.
Yes, this is exciting. So the robotics team, as you know, it's it's an expensive club, and they have been fundraising, but they've also received some donations. So you can see there, and many thanks to Falmouth Toyota, the Valley Group, Cape Cod, and the Gene Haas Foundation. As you can see, there's a total of $7,000 that we're asking you to accept so that the robotics club can continue to compete. And a lot of this will go toward the trips for competition, so those will come back to you as well.
So move.
Okay, second. Can I ask quickly, is it Cape Cod five or are we talking about the geographical?
No, Cape Cod five. It's missing.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, no other just questions or comments? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining or opposing? Okay, now we have two field trips, so.
Both in New York City. The Spanish group would like to take a trip to New York on March 6th. It is a one-day trip. They'll leave at 5:00 in the morning and they will return at 5:00 in the afternoon. I'm sorry, they'll depart at 5:00 to come back, so it will be longer than 5:00 to 5:00. So they will be able to watch the play Don Quixote. While they're there, they'll also visit a Spanish restaurant, and they'll do some sightseeing and take in the Hispanic Society Museum.
So move.
Second. It's so awesome.
Mike?
If I could through you, Terry, the first page says costs, and it has a breakdown. It's 140. Is that per student or are we supplementing that in some way? Just the overall cost. I don't know if we can do something. The first page, Carla Steele.
They raise money. There should be a fundraising, a page in there that says how they're going to fundraise, so that's just a second.
They'll do a car launch.
Bake sale.
Yeah, that's, yes, okay. And they'll raise, they'll raise the money.
I do.
We'll have to pay attention to when they do it so that we can give them some business.
Yes.
Yeah, an accent would be good.
So act on the National Art Honor Society.
Yeah, so this is their annual trip that they take to New York.
I'm sorry, before, did I miss something?
We never voted.
Did you vote them together or?
We vote separately. Yeah, the Spanish one we have to vote, the Spanish field trip.
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I'm not, I hope you're not keeping record of how many times I messed up tonight.
It's really, it takes a long week.
Moving on to the National Art Honor Society.
So this is their annual trip to New York, and so we're just asking to vote on this trip. This is largely, I'm trying to see if it's listed here, but F E F does support this, and I do think there's some fundraising.
Yeah, and I think if Melissa were here, she would say, she'd talk about how great it is, okay?
Yeah.
I just, I have to give a shout out to the teachers who organize this and take all those kids and, you know.
And this is a one-day trip, so I should have said that in the beginning. They leave in the morning, come back late.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, never thought we'd get to routine business, but here we are, the minutes. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes for September 9th, 2025?
So move.
Second.
Any comments or edits? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, approval of September 30th, 2025 minutes.
So move.
Take it, Katrina.
Okay, any comments or edits? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? No, okay, committee reports. I just have a quick sentence. I'll be giving you a lot more information. The Cape Cod Collaborative is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, so a lot of good things happening, and they are also working as we do with the Wampanoag Tribe, so I'll have some information to come on that, okay?
The school committee student advisory was meant to meet today, but due to conflicts of scheduling unexpected because of the long weekend, the students weren't able to come to that meeting, so we are rescheduling for December 4th. I'm very much looking forward to it.
Any other meetings, Sue?
I attended the safety meeting with representatives from all the different schools as well as police and fire, et cetera, and heard comments in regards to the comment going on in regards to the safety efforts within the system. I also attended the Sports Hall of Fame, and Steve Kapoca did an awesome job, and it was, it was just a lot of fun to see the teams that we have been cheering on over the years and individuals be honored.
Literally, one of us was cheering them on and one of them was twirling the tandem. Okay, any other reports? I'm sorry, I went first. I didn't mean to do that, another mess up. Yes, Mike?
I don't have a report, but I would like to say that two weeks ago, a junior at Falmouth High School, Liam Matthews, hit a hole in one in golf, and that was pretty impressive, so that's it.
Okay, we love those kind of things. Anything about the kids? Okay, are there any requests for follow-up?
Just two little things. At the next school committee meeting with Dr. Door, could you talk a little about the elimination of the special, our special education at federal level and how that may impact us? And then I just wanted to say that because it's the third Thursday, the third, I'm so tired.
Third.
Third Saturday this coming weekend, we are going to attempt to host our discussion time at the main library at 10:30. And, you know, we know what we can and cannot talk about, but we do want to hear. So so we are asking for people to come by, and you're welcome to join us. 10:30, 10:30.
This Saturday you started?
Yes, the third Saturday of every month, we will be at the library. As many school committee people can go until we have a forum, and then, you know, then somebody's going to have to leave. But it's just an opportunity to engage with the community and parents and stuff.
Okay, who wants to say it?
Vote into a German.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?